Boarding in progress.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back to our September 12 special and regular meeting of the Pacifica City Council. Can we have the call to order? And roll call, please. Thanks, Sarah.
Hi, there. Calling to order the meeting at 7:06 PM and starting roll call with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Present.
Councilmember Vodderlaus.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Present.
Mayor Beer, would you like me to make a few comments about tonight's meeting format?
Yes, please, Sarah.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on Comcast Channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. Members of the public should use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use *9 to raise your hand to request to speak and *6 to unmute once called upon. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members for those received by noon today. Email comments are not monitored during the live meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you so much, Sarah. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. "The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama'tu Shaloni people, who are original habitat of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rama'tu Shaloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama'tu Shaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama'tu Shaloni people." We will now salute the flag. Led by me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, do we have a closed session report, city attorney?
There is no reportable action.
Thank you so much. Okay, everyone, so we have three proclamations and a special presentation. And because we have people present to accept each proclamation, we're going to do them one at a time and accept public comment one at a time. So first up, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. And Frida Edget, I hope I said your last name correct, is representative from Samatello County Behavioral Health Commission and Youth Committee Chair, and she will be here to accept the proclamation and make brief comments. It's really wonderful that we're doing this proclamation. It's really important work. As we all know, our mental health is really important, so... I will read the proclamation now. "The proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Suicide Prevention Month, September 2022. Whereas the City of Pacifica would join the county, state, and country in honoring Suicide Prevention Month, September; National Suicide Prevention Week, September 4th through 10th; and World Suicide Prevention Day, September 10th, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented." And whereas in 2021, 54 people died by suicide, 34% decrease from 82 in 2020 in Samatello County. And whereas in 2020, 12,297 contacts were received by the Samatello County Star Vista Crisis Hotline. In July 2022, the Star Vista Crisis Hotline received a 10% increase compared to July in 2021, likely due to the debut of the 988 number on July 16. And whereas Pacifica residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate, and reaching out to local 24/7 resources, including our local Samatello County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, 650-579-0350, or National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, or 1-800-273-TALK. And whereas residents can also play a role in suicide prevention by supporting local suicide prevention months, month events, advocacy days, and communication campaign. Across the city, county, and state, the 2022 September Suicide Prevention Month theme is Take Action for Suicide Prevention: Thriving at All Ages. And whereas beyond September, the City of Pacifica has joined the Samatello County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, where mayors across the 20 cities in Samatello County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness and access to mental health resources in their communities. Now therefore, I, Mary Beer, the mayor of Pacifica, to hereby designate September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month and call upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention done the 12th day of September. Hi Frida, how are you? Thank you for being with us tonight.
Oh, I'm well. Thank you so much for the proclamation and the invitation to come and accept it on behalf of the county of Samatello's Behavioral Health Commission. And I, so good evening, I want to thank you also, Mayor Beer, for your personal leadership and steadfast visceral passion for this issue in leading the Mayor's Health and Mental Health Initiative. Their, your efforts and your insights, as well as your invitation to bring your colleagues along, has really made a difference, and this is yet just the beginning. So I wanted to offer that acknowledgement and appreciation specifically to you as well. And thank you all to the city council members, city manager, and also to the people of Pacifica. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge this. As our mayor said, my name is Frida Edget. I use she/her pronouns. I'm on the Samatello County Behavioral Health Commission, as well as the Youth Committee member. And in addition to that, I am a person in recovery from a 15-year eating disorder. And in addition to Suicide Prevention Month, this is also National Recovery Month. And what we find, and one of the things that the theme of this month really attests to is that we can and we do recover with connection, with support, and with resilience. So I'm just curious, you know, if we were all in person, I'd be curious just by a raise of hands, and perhaps those of you that are on the Zoom dais as well, just thinking back, and by a raise of hands or your favorite emoji con, just I'm curious about how many of you have been personally impacted or know someone who couldn't imagine living themselves, who attempted suicide, or maybe perhaps took their own lives. And it's jarring how this is the case. And more and more, as was articulated in the proclamation, we're seeing and experiencing the extended effects of the pandemic on our communities with increased mental health challenges, trauma, and burnout and fatigue. And so the thoughts are becoming very prominent, and they vary based on age. And I know that for myself throughout the pandemic, and still today, I was often on the phone with other mothers, family members that had kids ranging from five all the way to 15, that were concerned in taking suicide ideation assessments for their kids because of the pressures, the isolation, and rapid changes in their lives. And as a mother myself, I have a three-year-old, almost three-year-old, almost three-year-old, as he reminds me very frequently. There were moments in my postpartum where I felt just so overwhelmed and was overwhelmed as well by the thoughts that were swirling through my mind. And what our elder, our elderly community members, they too are experiencing increased isolation when they need social support the most. And what we know to be true is that it is preventable. And so much of it is the ability to connect and hold space during some very pivotal moments and periods in time. And so I would invite the public to take this moment, as was asserted, was named, "It's thriving at every age" is the theme. And there's a very useful resource, suicideispreventable.org. That's also linked from the Samatello County's webpage. And in it, you'll find three simple steps with clear mainstream language, no jargon included in terms of how to know the signs, because pain is not always obvious. And when we pay attention, we can notice changes in behavior ranging from disengagement to giving away possessions. Using the right words, you know, being very empathetic, asking open-ended questions, and very importantly, knowing what not to say in those moments when you're noticing somebody is in pain and struggling. And then finally, reaching out. I love, 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 the proclamation includes the resources of where to go. As we, as we shared, this has been transformative. The National 988, which is basically substituting 19911 numbers that are now going to specialize mental health professionals instead of law enforcement if you or somebody you know is experiencing crisis. And in addition to the phone numbers that were listed for Star Vista and other local partners, you can also text E is an echo, M, M is in Mary, your mayor, to 741741 for additional support. So please join us in promoting the year's theme, "Thriving at All Ages." Visit Suicide Is Preventable. And then additionally, if you go to smchhealth.org and then put Suicide Prevention Month in the URL, you will see a bevy of events, both virtual, online, resources, materials to educate yourself and share with your community members and those that you love. So thank you again so much deeply from the bottom of my heart for proclaiming September Suicide Prevention Month.
Frida, that was beautiful. Thank you so much. Would you like to go to public comment, please, Sarah? Is there anybody? Oh, wait, it's Elizabeth who's helping us with public comment, right?
That's right, Mayor Beer. Elizabeth Brooks, management analyst. We have a couple hands raised. I'll go first to Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore from the Manor District. And I just want to thank our mayor for her facilitating this effort and taking part in this. It's so important for our community to be aware of this and bringing it to our community's attention is super important. So thank you all for this proclamation, and thank you especially, Mary, for just being so steadfast and making sure that our community as a whole is aware of this.
Thank you, Suzanne. Dan Stegen, I'm sorry, I don't think I said your name correctly. You're next. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dan.
Excellent. I have three minutes of comments on consent item number four and three minutes of comments on consent number eight. I just want to make sure that they aren't skipped over as you move past the consent counter. Thank you.
Okay.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Oh, Erin Macias has raised her hand.
Okay, let her speak.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Erin Macias of Lindemar. I have a quick question. Is this the time where we're supposed to comment on items that are not on the agenda?
No, we're in the special presentation right now.
Thank you, Frida, for your beautiful presentation. I'll put my hand down.
Thanks, Erin. See you later.
No other hands, Mayor Beer.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you again, Frida. Did anyone on council want to comment? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I try and keep it brief, but I was four years old when my brother Barry introduced me to what death was. And this is a topic that hits home. I would tell more personal stories, but time doesn't allow. And this is very important. I think that you mentioned earlier, Frida, and thank you for being here, the importance of learning how to speak to someone who is in this kind of pain. And again, this doesn't really allow itself to give us that lesson properly. But if you are approaching someone who you think is in that kind of pain, it's very helpful to learn how to speak the language of not just reassuring it's going to be all right, not just dismissing it, but helping them from where they are to hopefully a greater possibility. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, sharing your experience and also emphasizing that.
Councilmember Vodderlaus.
I think that all of us have been touched by suicide, and it's something that I never have gotten over. It just... Oh, sorry. I just want to thank you all for being here and thank Mary for the Mayor's Mental Health Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vodderlaus, and thank you again, Frida. Super special that you're here. Okay, we're going to move forward with our next proclamation, which is National Preparedness Month. Tonight, we have Deputy Fire Chief Chuck Pomblek and Pump Elect. Chuck, am I ever going to get it right? I mean, how long have I known you? From the North County Fire Authority, he will present to make a brief comment. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. "Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of National Preparedness Month, September 2022. Whereas during September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take some simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas with the continuing COVID-19 pandemic, the large wildfires throughout the state, and yearly winter storms in our county, all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Pacifica residents. And whereas the community should take steps to help them before disaster strikes, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, program. And whereas this important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of disaster. Now therefore, I, Mary Beer, Mayor of Pacifica, to hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all Pacifica residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster done this 12th day of September." Hi, Chuck.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Deputy Fire Chief Chuck Pomickpick. The North County Fire Authority would like to thank you and the city council for recognizing National Preparedness Month. Emergency preparedness is not just done one month a year, but should be considered every month all year long. National Preparedness Month creates opportunities for citizens to prepare their homes, their businesses, and their families to prepare their homes for disasters such as fire, floods, earthquakes, and other national natural disasters. Remember, planning and preparing starts before the disaster. When citizens take responsibility for preparing their families and communities, the chance for survival to return to normalcy is greatly increased. The North County Fire Authority urges all citizens to plan ahead and prepare themselves, their families, and their friends for any disaster or emergency so that they can increase their chances for survival and a positive outcome. You can go to our website, northcountyfire.org, and click on various preparedness and fire safety tips. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service for the community. We'll send it out to public comment now. Open public comment. Elizabeth, do we have any hands?
We have a hand raised from Erin Macias. Please state your name for the record.
Just remember that this is public comment on the proclamation for National Preparedness Month.
Thank you. This is Erin Macias of Lindemar. I personally feel it would better serve our North County firefighters and first responders if the City of Pacifica code enforcement actually enforced the complaints on record regarding hazardous blue gum eucalyptus groves that are not maintained and encroaching on property lines of others. We deserve this defensible space, and the city needs to respond to us who have brought it to your attention through the proper channels. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
No other hands, Mayor Beer.
Okay, thank you. We can bring it back to council. Councilmember O'Neil.
I'd just like to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for all the work they do. The preparedness, the education with CERT, et cetera. I mean, I know they spend a lot of time doing the CERT and they've trained and out, out a lot of citizens, which will help whenever something might happen. But I just wanted to say thank you for the job well done.
Anyone else? Counsel? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Anyone else from council?
Just wanted to go back to comments and say thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right now we'll move on to our next proclamation, which is for International Peace Day. We will have Linda Peebles from Pacifica Peace People will be promoted to panelists to make a few comments after I read the proclamation. I want to thank Billy McRath for encouraging us to, to create this proclamation tonight. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of International Day of Peace 2022. Whereas peace embodies the highest and best inclination of people worldwide. And whereas the 1981, in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed that International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas this year's International Day of Peace theme, End Racism, Build Peace, urges us to collectively acknowledge and immediately address the suffering caused by racism, economic inequality, and climate change. And whereas we all have a role to, to play in fostering peace and tackling racism is a crucial, a crucial way to contribute to this effort. And whereas true peace requires standing up for the human rights of all of the world's people. And whereas the International Day of Peace is also an occasion to celebrate and appreciate the efforts of those who have dedicated their lives to eliminate conflicts and civil wars across the globe and have upheld peace in difficult situations. And whereas we acknowledge that encouraging policies that provide for living wages, affordable housing, food security, and universal healthcare is an effective way of prioritizing people and their needs and creating a more equitable and sustainable world. And whereas the International Peace Day is one day of the year when we as a community can advocate for diplomacy devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace through observing a day of nonviolence and ceasefire. And whereas we celebrate peace by standing up against acts of hate, online and offline, and by spreading compassion, kindness, and hope. Now therefore I, Mary Beer, Mayor of Pacifica, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2022 as a day of peace in Pacifica done this 12th day of September. Do we have Linda promoted? There she is.
Yes.
Hey Linda, nice to see you.
Hi Mary, hi everyone on the City Council. The Pacifica Peace People are so grateful for this beautiful, beautiful proclamation for peace. It says a lot, doesn't it, about all the aspects that need to come together and align to really make peace happen, both in your, your own community here in Pacifica, which as we know, Pacifica stands for peace, and, and that just emanates throughout the whole world. And especially at a time like this when there is so much unrest in the world, there's the war in Ukraine and, and other violence that is happening, it's really important to take this moment to really think about peace. Sometimes we can feel a little discouraged, but I think being hopeful and, and, and doing things like, uh, this, this moment of acknowledging International Peace Day through the Peace Proclamation, it says a lot about our town and our city council. It's really a wonderful thing that you've done, and you've been doing it for a number of years, for which we are, we are very, very grateful. Um, we, our peace group, uh, is really working locally to promote peace in many ways and in, uh, on a public front and in classrooms and, uh, there's just no end to the possibilities for promoting peace in your community. We would particularly like to invite you to come to our other activities for Peace Week, uh, beginning with the, uh, 16th, that is a week from Friday. No, it's this Friday. Yes, uh, we are having, um, a, uh, public reading of Martin Luther King's 1967 speech called Beyond Vietnam, A Time To Break Silence. And this, uh, speech is being broken into 16 parts and various members of the community representing different groups, and including some churches and people in education and, and, uh, so it's, it's going to be read by 16 people. And it's going to be outdoors at the Sanchez Art Center in the Garden Plaza. And, uh, we would, it probably will take about an hour, so we hope you can turn out for that event. That's our first event. Then we're going to have, um, the full page peace ad in the Pacifica Tribune like we have had for a number of years. And I know that, uh, names of people on the City Council, uh, have been on that and are on that peace ad that'll appear on actually International Peace Day, which is September 21st, set aside by the United Nations. So it just coincides with the day the Tribune comes out. And then following that, we're going to have, uh, sign waving on, um, International Peace Day in the usual spot there on Highway One near the Moose Lodge. So the event at the, uh, Sanchez Art Center, the public reading starts at 6:00 PM. And the sign and banner waving, um, uh, on the 21st is at 5:00 PM. That should last an hour. So we invite you and all members of the community, anybody listening, uh, to join us for these activities. Thank you again for your wonderful support on About Peace. Bless you all.
Thank you so much Linda, and thank you for letting us know about the events. I really appreciate that. We will go to public comment now on the proclamation for International Peace Day.
Mayor Beer, there's one hand raised from Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, and it certainly takes courage to promote peace. Um, I just want to thank the Peace People for their advocacy in this area. And, um, I just really appreciate, um, that they are teaching us all how to act locally peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne.
There are no other hands, Mayor Beer.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Council, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Okay, first I'm going to put my hand down. Thank you Linda for being here tonight. It's great to see your face, even though I haven't seen your face in person in such a long time. I want to thank you for inspiring me and for inspiring our community. The steadfast work of the Pacifica Peace People is a testament to peace being possible. And I love the example and I love the, um, the inspiration. I'm, I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, I also wanted to say thank you to Linda, um, and your, for all you do and, uh, for all your group does. Um, I, I find myself becoming introspective and meditative whenever we're giving these proclamations year after year. And, um, I'm struck by, uh, the inherency for inner struggle and how that translates then from the inside outward in terms of approaching peace. Um, and that peace is in action, not merely in inaction. It is consciously breathing. It is consciously waiting. It is actively thinking. And ultimately making space for energy to dissipate uh, rather than engaging it in such a fashion that it has given fuel to continue. So thank you again for the work you are doing and giving us the opportunity to pause for a moment and contemplate deeper.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the Pacifica Peace People. Okay, moving on, we have a special presentation from the Pacific Coast Fog Fest people. We have James Crowe and/or Kathy Johnson to make a presentation. Who's with us tonight, Sarah?
Mayor Beer, James Crowe will be with us, and, um, I'd ask him to raise his hand in the attendee list to help us promote him to a panelist.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And we're just bringing him over as a panelist, and I'll bring up the presentation.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Good evening, James. Where are you?
All right, now, there we go. How are you?
Hello, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, council, for inviting us and, uh, tonight and talking about Fog Fest. And, uh, many of us are, all I can tell you is that, uh, going around town this weekend and visiting a lot of people is a lot of excitement and buzz about this one. So, um, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's good to be here and, and, uh, I'll just kind of put a short presentation together because many of us, this is, uh, just a refresher because it's been here for 35 years, but, um, this is a refresher for some people that may not know what we do and how we do it. So, um, put a little presentation together here and we'll just go through it quickly and, um, and, uh, and, yeah. So, uh, this is going to be fun. I feel like some of the stuff is so important that came before me. I, I feel a little like, wow, oh, you know? But it's, it's all, everything we do is important. So, uh, Fog Fest, um, the dates are September 24th and Sunday, uh, September 25th, 10 AM to 6 PM both days. Um, and, you know, uh, it, this, this all started back in 1986 and, uh, the Fog Fest promotes the City of Pacifica, um, attracts visitors, raises funds for local community groups. And that's really the, at the heart of it. I mean, it is our community groups. They, they provide the, the, the work that goes into it to, to put on the festival. And then we provide them, uh, with, with, with the funds that come through Fog Fest. So, you know, um, there's over 200 arts and crafts booths, um, food. Um, some things have changed a little bit this year. Coming out of COVID has been a, a great challenge, uh, especially with this being my first year as president. It's, it, like anything else, uh, we've had to kind of, uh, we had to throw away a, a, a lot of things that we've done in the past and restart, right? It's a restart for us, um, which is a good thing because, um, there's going to be new things and new vendors and, and, at this festival. And so we're really excited about that. Um, we, um, over the last 19 years, uh, we brought 1,167,000 dollars been donated to the community. Um, we are expecting, based on the other events that have happened in Pacifica, Terranova Car Show had their largest car show ever. Um, we, you know, the weather should be great. Uh, we usually do about 60,000 people in the two days, and I think we're going to outdo that this year, uh, because of the excitement. So, uh, very excited about that. Um, next slide, please. Um, these next two slides, we can just go through them kind of quick. Um, just sees a list of some of the nonprofit groups that helped us put this on, uh, the two days. And, um, people, people ask us how, how they, you know, how it works. Basically, we had our community groups, we put them in the vendor booths, uh, and, and, and help, uh, with, um, serving and things like that. And, um, they work throughout the day if they work both days. Um, there's, if they only work one day, they get a certain amount of money. And if they work both days, they get more money. So that's how, that's how we're be able, we're able to put this on as a nonprofit and not half-staff. We're all volunteers with, uh, with the exception of a few of us. So, um, but yeah, you go to the next slide and, uh, you can, uh, look at these if you're leisure. And these are some of the big, um, organizing, organizations that were, uh, are working with this in the booths. So when you're go up to a booth, say hi. They're the community members of these groups and they work very hard. So, um, next slide, please. Um, we have three stages again this year, uh, music. Um, I had the, uh, pleasure of sitting down with Carmen Ratty, uh, who's a really great blues musician here in, in Pacifica. Um, interviewed him for our magazine, uh, this month and, uh, and, uh, he's, you can tell the excitement is not just coming from people that want to come back to the festival, but the musicians are excited because they're playing again. Um, and, and they're ready to really tear it up, you know? So, um, I'm excited for the music and energy that's going to come from all of our stages. Um, and you can go online and, 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 and get a list of the, the people that are, are performing. So, um, next slide, please. Um, I'd like to, um, kind of talk about our, our, our board and, um, our executive committee, um, obviously me. And, uh, we did, we did have a vice president this year. We'll be looking for one. Um, they, um, that's one seat that we do have available. Scott Cerimelli, he does all the sponsorships for us on the board. Kathleen, yes, she has a last name. Uh, we needed a secretary, and she graciously stepped up and, and, uh, this year to help us out, uh, to be secretary. Um, Larry Passmore, our past president, uh, stayed on this year, um, stayed on as treasurer, um, and really helped guide us through this. Um, you know, his work that he's done in the past has been incredible. He's served this community very well. And, you know, it's been about two years and during COVID, really looking for someone to, to come on board and, um, you know, a tremendous amount of respect for Larry and, uh, he, he's done a great job serving the community. But he's ready, he's ready to, to move on and, and enjoy some retirement, I think. Some other board members, we have John Beckmeyer. I think Sue's pretty familiar with him. And, uh, John is our logistic chair and does an amazing job of dotting the i's and crossing the t's for us. Josh Armstrong, um, he is probab-, uh, I don't know how he does it. Working with bands is a very real challenge in itself because they're all artists and he does such an incredible job every year. He has a knack for it. And, uh, he, he really did an amazing job of getting the bands together and guaranteeing that we didn't have just two stages of music, but three. So, um, he's our entertainment chair. Uh, Robin Reynolds, um, she is our parade coordinator. She's been here on the board the longest. Um, and, um, I, there's not enough words to describe how I feel about her. She's amazing. This parade is really the crown, the jewel in our crown. Um, and it's bigger than ever this year. Um, we literally are trying to figure out how to get everybody through it. Yeah, um, everybody want to be a part of it this year, and she's done an amazing job with Archie. Archie Juddan, he is, uh, our parade co-chair. Together, um, they've done a spectacular job of, of putting all this stuff together and getting the marching bands and the floats and everything. And, uh, and, uh, this year, um, we didn't necessarily have one grand marshal because we wanted to open it up to all the essential workers and, uh, health workers and people that work in the grocery stores. And all those people are wanted to honor this year because without them, we wouldn't be in the place where we are right now and be able to have this festival again. And, um, they worked tirelessly, the nurses, the doctors, and, 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 and you, all of you on the board and, uh, I mean, in, in the cities and stuff. Keeping it all together remotely, uh, was an incredible challenge for all of us. So we're, you're, you are all essential workers and got us through this. So we're honoring, we couldn't just have one grand marshal this year. So you're going to see a lot of police and, 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 and city folk and it's, it's going to be a great celebration of coming back. So thank you for everything you've done to get us to this point. Um, next, uh, slide, please. This is, this next slide is a slide of, of, of our sponsors. Without them, we, we couldn't do what we do. You know, the City of Pacifica is so gracious to us. The Pacifica School District, Jefferson Union High School. Uh, we have a new water sponsor that's very, uh, earth-friendly, Path Water. Fork Point Beer is our new beer sponsor. Boganitas was for years, um, but they got bought out and, um, they, um, they moved on, but they serviced incredibly well through the years. Pacific Coast Television, Humble Distillery is helping us make our, our special drinks and the cutter drinks, which is very popular. Uh, City Toyota, Pacifica Parks Beaches and Recreation, uh, Direct Mortgage Funding, Longboard Margarita will be doing the margaritas again for us this year. And Bloody Marys, uh, to keep us going. Uh, Lit, um, uh, stepped up and, uh, supported us in a big way this year. And Recology Way Zero. Um, so, um, we want to really thank our sponsors for, um, stepping up again this year um, in a time where they're recovering from COVID too, and they really reached down in their pockets to, to support us. So we're very, very, very grateful for that. Um, other people who I'd like to mention, um, Kathy Johnson, who's our coordinator extraordinaire, has been doing it for quite a few years. Um, you see her around town. She does amazing work in bringing everything together. Julie Mel, our social media manager, Robin Graham, our webmaster. Julie Mel, our social media manager, Robin Graham, our webmaster, our city of Pacifica council liaison, Sue. Thank you, Sue. Thank you so much. A huge thank you to Jeff Canberra, owner of Festival Productions. Jeff does all the booths and brings all the vendors together, whether they're art vendors or the food vendors. And, and it's a big lift for him, but he's does an incredible job. Kara Macho, who served on our board for about five years, connected Larry and me and thought we would be a good fit. And she was actually the one that brought Larry in to be president and suggested he would be a good president. So I appreciate her connecting us. Our creative thanks to Julie Engelman. Julie was the creator of our poster this year, which I have and I'll give it to you. We can't, can't do it. It's in the presentation there. I'll stop by and give it to the council, but thank you. But Julie and I sat down and we really spent a couple weeks, you know, going back and forth and figuring out what we wanted to do. And the feedback we've gotten from it is, has been just amazing. So I want to thank Julie. She did a great job. Pete Lamori and Christine Stahl for supplying posters that will be available for sale at the, at the festival because we've got a lot of requests for that. Montagronno Incorporated, they are, you know, obviously supplying our, our beer. And Anita Reese at the Pacifica Resource Center, John the Sun Guy, Paul Laverini, works at the public, publicly, Public Works Superintendent and DP Debbie Cruz, who work really super hard for us and can't thank them enough. Captain Chris Clements and the Pacifica Police Department, our Fire, Pacifica Fire Departments, I have to thank. And Cindy Abbott, our fire chief, Ron Myers, Daniel Lidle and Mike Perez at the Parks and Recreation Department. And Sophia Hony-Roll, the PBNR Rec Coordinator and Fund Fest Coordinator and Grocery Outlet Oceana and Cresco. So those are my thank yous and I know it's a little long, but really we couldn't do without all the volunteers. My biggest thanks go out to them. They're the workforce and really thank the Pacifica community. We're so blessed to call Pacifica home. And through Fog Fest, we realized once again that we're all one family, right? Because it was gone and we all lost something during the pandemic. So this one feels a little different, I think, for everybody. And it, it really is helping us heal and bring us back together. And I think that's why it's so special this year. And finally, one thank Larry Passmore again, who I'm succeeding. His community service has been amazing. We love the big man. And when you're out there, say hi, maybe buy the man a beer because he serves it. So with that, I thank you so much. I look forward to dropping off the poster for the council and I can't thank all of you enough for everything you do.
Thank you, James. We're super lucky to have you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks.
We open it up for a public comment. I don't see any hands raised, Mayor Beer. Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Counsel, any comments from counsel? Councilmember Waterloss.
Just looking forward so much to having the Fog Fest again. People are excited. They're ready to go. Let's do Fog Fest and have fun in the parade. And all the council members are in the parade this year for the first time in a really long time. So thank you all.
I, I just wanted to thank all the volunteers that put this together. The ones, not only the organizing committee, but I know each of the nonprofits, you know, working the many hours and the food boost. You know, my son's Boy Scout troop paws the ice to all the booths and food booths. And I just wanted to thank all the volunteers because it truly is a festival put on by the village. And I just wanted to say thanks to all the volunteers from the organizing staff, all the way to the, to the guys that are doing the, the green waste and sorting and stuff at the end. So thanks.
Mayor Proton.
Just looking forward to having some fun and doing it with our community. And I, I echo everything Mike said and thank you, James, for mentioning as many of the names as you did. And I just, it's, I'm looking forward to us celebrating us. Thank you.
I am also looking forward to that. Thank you just so much for everything. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge your fine work, James, and thank you so much for leadership on this. But the team is truly, you know, you're leading a great team and that's amazing. I remember volunteering at this event in the past where I, you know, as Mike mentioned about the community groups, I had four T-shirts on. So that I could just take one off as I went to the next booth that I was volunteering at because it's so much fun to do that. It's just so important and thank you for making sure that it happened this year.
I couldn't do without everybody. Like I said, like Mike said, it's a village. And, and yes, people have asked me if I'm going to paint my hair blue like the mermaid on the poster. And yes, I am. So yes, I will have blue hair to celebrate. We are true blue in Pacifica and it's back and I will have blue hair. So you'll be able to spot me all weekend long.
Thanks so much, James. See you soon.
Thank you, Council. Very much appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Bye. We're looking forward to it. Okay, counsel. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items from consent? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. Mayor Beer, we have a couple hands raised. We'll begin with Dan Stedjink. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Can you hear me, council members?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Dan Stedjink and I'll first be speaking for three minutes on consent item number four. At that time, I'll stop and upon your approval, I'll start speaking for three minutes on consent nine, number eight. The emergency at Anza Pump Station.
Madam Mayor. Were those items pulled by the council?
They were not.
Okay, so the way we deal with consent items is at the time that the council calls the consent calendar, then the council will ask council members if they would like to pull any consent items. And if that occurs, then any pulled items will be heard separately and the public will comment at that time. If there are no consent items pulled, then all speakers have three minutes to speak on all items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Can you please reset the time? Okay, Dan, did you hear that?
Yeah, has anyone pulled, has anyone pulled items? I thought they had not. Okay, so I'll speak for three minutes on item four and number eight.
Thank you.
The emergency at the Anza Pump Station is not described here, but basically more than two years ago, under Mayor Beckmeyer, the Cresbee Station at Anza Pump Equipment was paid for, allocated, but never installed after being destroyed in a mysterious arson. Please do not employ Historico, Pacifica Sewer Vendors, owned by, majority owned by twenty twenty one convicted felons, according to US District Court three twenty CB zero four 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 two SK. That includes pipe and plant solutions, MAR proven management and sewer AI. Lindemar residents were never told that the Anza Pump Station was not installed. When Lindemar flooded three times within ninety days last year, no one was in charge at the city. City Manager Kevin Woodhouse was out of town, Public Works Director Lisa Peterson was out of town and the wastewater director quit the day after the first flood. There are a large number of ex wastewater employees who believe that the problem here is that the capacity of the pipe between the Anza Pump Station and Rockaway Beach is not of sufficient diameter. I want to repeat, there's a lot of past employees who believe that the problem is the pipe going between the Anza Pump Station and Rockaway Beach over the hill by Seabowl is not of sufficient diameter. I strongly urge you to reject item eight as a whitewash. You know, whether you paint Olani, Oloni murals on it or make it look like Taco Bell, it's not gonna solve the problem. You need to have, before you allocate any money to this, you have to figure out what the problem is. There's a lot of employees who say that it's the pipe going over the hill by Seabowl. And whether you guys make it match the, the new twelve million dollar Civic Center, whether you make it match Taco Bell or paint Oloni murals on it, that whitewashed isn't gonna solve the problem. And come the first three weeks of December, we'll still have floods in Lindemar like we've had every December since nineteen eighty two. This continues. Every Realtor should be required to put a disclosure on there for any homes sold in that area, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next public comment is from Erin Macias. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. This is Erin Macias of Lindemar. And I would like to very briefly echo Dan's comments. This was all addressed during the EQ Basin Appeal and there are public comments on record as to the underlying problems that the waste is not being sent fast enough to the end. And but otherwise, I would like to just mention that I think you all missed out on a really cool karaoke party at a short term rental that disturbed the entire neighborhood. And, you know, the police have responded and then you missed another party over by beach. And there was a twenty two year old celebrating with all of her girlfriends and the police responded there. So I just want to make a comment on the short term rental issue in the city of Pacifica and it really needs to be pushed forward. I did place a public record request, which was denied, much to my frustration. You know, the denying information to the public, I really don't quite understand the grounds. It's very counterproductive to the citizens supporting their council and bringing solutions to the table. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Christine Bowles, who'll be followed by Jeremy. Please state your name for the record.
This is Christine Bowles, architect of the Manor District. I just want to thank you all, item two, for the revised minutes of the July limit appeal hearing about the general plan. And just a huge thanks to Sarah Coffey for correcting those to include our testimony, my, both mine and mine. I, I appreciate it and have no other objections to those minutes. And I also want to thank you all for all the work on the Heritage Tree ordinance and, and item eleven. And that was just such a lovely example of a good interactive public process. And I hope we can do more city business that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, you'll be our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Carpenter. And I have two comments. One is, it looks like you are trying to change the rules regarding issues that, that are being discussed by city council to require three city councils.
Jeremy, that, that comment will happen during that item. Right now, we're taking comment on the consent calendar, which is items one through eleven.
Okay, all right, then I can comment later. Then I guess my, my time will restart, won't it?
It will.
Okay, all right, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised, Mayor Beer. Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council.
Was Jeremy Stafford was in line a couple times, then now he's dropped off again for public comment on the consent. I don't know if he's, wants to put his hand up or not. Maybe he's oral communication, so.
Okay, bringing it back to council. Discussion or motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second. Okay, can we have a vote, please?
With the consent calendar moved by Councilmember Waterloss and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Waterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, big stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And consent calendar passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. All right. We're going to move on to public comments. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight. Any person wishing to, to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however, that during oral communications portion, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. You'll have three minutes to share and we will open it up now for a public comment. Our first hand raised is Jeremy Stafford. Please state your name for the record.
Hey, this is Jeremy Stafford with the Pacifica Firefighters Group. Evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Just wanted to invite you all to the County Firefighters Chili Cookoff we're having on the twenty fourth at Central Park in San Mateo. It runs from eleven to five. There's a car show, cold beer, good chili, good time, usually a couple thousand people come. I know this year it's kind of bad timing. It's on the same weekend as the Fog Fest, but if you get out of there early or break free, we'd love to see you. As well as our county OES just got back in town. They were out for fifteen days, six days. They were at the Rim Creek Fire in Oregon. And then from there, they got released and bumped over to the Mill Fire for the remainder of the fifteen days in Shasta. So that's about it. Just wanted to give you a heads up that we're back in town. And while the OES were out, all the stations were fully staffed and you never saw a difference. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jeremy. Our next hand raised is Anita Reese. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. And I just wanted to let you all know that we continue to be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday from nine to five, Wednesday from nine to seven and Friday, nine to one. We are closed between twelve thirty and one thirty for lunch, Monday through Thursday. We're also open one Saturday a month from nine to one. We will have a booth at Fog Fest, so we're skipping our regular Saturday office hours in September. And our next Saturday office hours will be on Saturday, October eighth, which is also our twenty twenty two Palma Palooza fundraiser. This year's Palma Palooza will be similar to last year. For our sponsorship gift, we will deliver a gift to Pacifica locals and mail them for folks who are outside of town for gifts of a hundred or more. The gift will be candles from Cooper and Moss Studio, a local shop on Palmetto that makes farm to candle clean burning beeswax candles. So if you'd like to sponsor, please go to palmapalooza.com. Our next grocery drive through is Wednesday, September twenty eighth at the American Legion Hall at five 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 Buell. If you need groceries before then, please call PRC to schedule a time for pantry support. Beginning in October, we'll be expanding our grocery rescue program and increasing deliveries with the addition of a second refrigerated van, as well as returning to our pre-COVID nineteen choice distribution, which will continue on the fourth Wednesday of every month. And we'll need volunteers again in a way that we haven't for a little while. So if any of you all want to volunteer again, please let us know. We're also continuing our Unhoused on the Coast outreach work, so please contact our UC Outreach staff by email at ucutreach@packresourcecenter.org or by calling PRC if you know someone or see someone who's living on the streets and in encampment or in vehicle. We have just hired two new outreach specialists, so they're in the process of getting trained. And probably at the next council meeting, I'll offer their cell phone numbers because we're needing to get new numbers. If you need support with groceries, emergency financial assistance for rent, mortgage or other critical needs, access to homeless service or information and resources in general, please contact PRC at six five zero seven three eight seven four seven zero by email at info@packresourcecenter.org or via our website at packresourcecenter.org. And whenever possible, we encourage folks to call before you go to our office so that we can schedule a phone appointment if that's easier for people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anita. Our next hand is Remy Tan, who will be followed by Christine Bowles. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Remy Tan.
Hi, Remy Tan, architect and resident of Pacific Manor. Just wanted to comment on a couple of things. This is, I know I commented on about about almost a month, two months ago. It's over on the the Esplanade Beach where the apartment buildings were torn down. There's a a piece of concrete that's kind of hanging on the edge over there and, you know, every time I walk down there, there are people sitting under that and under the rebar sticking out and that thing looks like it's going to come down, you know, you know, about fifty to a hundred feet and land on somebody. So, you know, I hope the city can address that before, you know, somebody gets hurt and becomes, you know, becomes a lawsuit. The other item I noticed is there are a lot of people living in campers and vehicles along along the the Esplanade in front of the apartment buildings. You know, by the bluff stair and, you know, that's something, you know, maybe the Pacific Resource Center can reach out to those folks. There's a lot of litter and trash in that area where these folks are camped out. But I don't have any objections to people camping out, you know, especially with the high housing crisis, but geez, they really got to clean up after themselves. And, you know, so so that's kind of a big issue and health and safety issue. Another health issue I noticed, there's been a lot of mosquitoes around. We're getting basically chewed up over over on Farallon Avenue. And I was also walking around Muscle Rock, you know, in the north end of Pacifica and I got chewed up the other night and it, you know, I'm just surprised. I've been living here twenty-five, twenty-six years and we've never had a mosquito problem. So just wondering if the city or the county has stopped spraying on mosquitoes. But that's a kind of serious health hazard. Mosquito-borne disease is, you know, a pretty big deal. Especially a lot of people are, you know, not electing to take the vaccinations for, you know, all the other things other than COVID. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Remy. Christine Bowles, you are our next speaker. Please state your name for the record. Christine, are you there? Elizabeth, does it look like she's trying to unmute or? I can't see. She's been given permission to speak. There are no other hands raised at this time. Just give her another minute, see if there's just a problem connecting.
Is it her husband, Bob?
It's not. It's not like her to not be able to connect, so. Okay, well. How about we close public comment for now? If Christine happens to raise her hand again, then we can address her at that time. Okay? Okay. Council Communications. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Waterloss.
Okay, um, let's see, I'm at a meeting regarding Prop One, which is women's rights issues and it was really nicely attended. The Council of Cities was held in Pacifica and we're still getting comments. We held it at Sanchez and had speakers about the Aloney Indians, et cetera, and it was an event that all of the other cities really enjoyed. We went to the Cal Cities Conference. And in those meetings, I attended Coastal Cities Group, Cannabis and Economic Development, Climate Action Plan, Creative Solutions for Homelessness, Secrets to Building Tech Economies, and Mayors and Council Members Group. So a lot of really good information. There's a reason we attend those meetings because we learn more all of the time and education is important for each and every one of us to continue learning. And it's really important that we attend and see other council members throughout the state and listen to what other cities are doing, which is important for the city of Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Who's next? Sue, Mike, Councilmember.
I, Sue, we were all, oh, Sue, want to go first? You can go, Sue.
Oh, are you going, Mike? Okay.
No, okay, sorry. We all attended the League of Cities Conference down Long Beach. I think we all got some ideas we want to discuss as with Kevin and the council to bring forward. One is I had, we went to one that Sue and I were both in for short-term rentals. Some ideas and there were some others that I think we need to find grant opportunities, et cetera. I think we need to follow up on, so I think it was well worth the going down there.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I'm having trouble unmuting. Yes, absolutely. The League of Cities, Cal, now called Cal Cities Meeting, was a tremendous benefit in terms of professional development and professional networking. Having the opportunity to hear how other communities across the state are addressing the challenges that we ourselves are addressing. Sometimes they're further ahead than we are and we can just borrow their ideas and they're happy to share. Mike mentioned one of the highlights for me was possible approach to short-term rentals that we might want to explore. Very beneficial. But I think that the other opportunity that I had that I appreciated was the chance to speak with folks that are involved in economic development and really kind of suss out some ideas and, you know, what will work in Pacifica and, you know, one of the the phrases that I came away with that absolutely resonated for me with what we're trying to do in Pacifica around economic development was creating world-class opportunities for our visitors and for our residents. And I think, you know, it really crystallized for me what I believe and what I want. Because sometimes economic development sounds like, you know, bring in some big box stores, call it done. And and that isn't what we're we're after here in Pacifica. So on that note, I attended ever so briefly the Stakeholders Meeting that was offered by Cosbot, who is working on an Economic Opportunities Study for the city of Pacifica. The mayor was there thankfully and so the little tiny bit of the meeting I was able to attend, I I definitely benefited from, but she was there for the whole thing. And I'll go back and go over that recording so that I can have the full context. But continuing to work on those issues is really important. At this event this week, last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the Coastal Cities Group panel. And I was very pleased to see out of, I mean, the room was pretty big and this particular time it was set in rows of chairs. And sometimes it's been with tables and and I prefer that setup. So note to self, it doesn't always happen unless you request it. But I was really pleased to see how full that room was and how engaged all of the people from all over the state were in bringing up different issues and and collaborating and we like, we save time at the end for people to have those little chats. So I think that was just a huge opportunity as well. We'll be bringing forward more details as time allows at future councilman council meetings, but I just really wanted to to say how much I appreciated the opportunity for that professional development. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, I start with Ukraine on my mind, especially over these last couple of days and part and parcel with peace. May they find peace over yonder. Jeremy Stafford spoke earlier. I want to I I think the next time I get together with Jeremy, I need to learn next how exactly our Cal OES works. But thank you for sending the engine. I'm grateful it came back in one piece. And more than that, I know we had an incident in Shamrock Ranch, I believe, over the Labor Day weekend. So thank you again to our firefighters for doing the job they do protecting us. I attended a Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting. Especially of note, they're going to have a program about electrifying fleets. And I immediately thought that would be charming if our city fleet maybe could garner that assistance from PCE to become electrified. So city manager, I'll talk to you about that a little later. There was a billing snafu. It sounds like people might have been a little underbilled on the last cycle or two. Probably about eight bucks a household on average. So I'll just give that heads up. There might be an adjustment coming. We're still five percent under the PG&E rates, but we might need to make a slight adjustment there. We're on track for our twenty-four-seven energy by twenty-twenty-five. I won't give an exhaustive speech on what that means right now. We appropriate monies for wind and solar projects, including a project for disadvantaged communities, both in San Mateo County and Los Banos, where we have reach. So aside from that, I have been on vacation for the last three weeks. And I was visiting a cousin of mine in Minnesota, Minneapolis. That's where I was attending the last council meeting about the Sharp Park specific plan. But on my way, I attended the Giant Twine Ball in Darwin, Minnesota. And I went there and I thought to myself, what an interesting, intriguing opportunity for economic development. This little town that otherwise is wildly unknown has that they draw in worldwide tourism because of this unique feature of their town. While I was in Minneapolis, I, my cousin's a biker and even though I don't particularly care to bike ride, we took walks around the extensive bicycle infrastructure they have in Minneapolis. It's beautiful. I inquired as to the homelessness issues they have there out of a sense of wonder. My cousin hooked me up with a friend of his who owns a cafe and amongst the discussion, he told me about this Avivo program they have over there where they took a big warehouse. They stuck ready-made units in it for transitional housing. It was an amazing program and of course I couldn't go there without visiting the George Floyd Memorial. And it it's an amazing opportunity that city has. And it's it was as heavy as one might expect going there. While I was in transit, I learned about Iran where they just allowed five hundred women into a soccer game for the first time. And then getting back to Cal Cities, where I got to spend time with my fellow council members. There was this quote, passion over paycheck, which kind of sums up nicely why we do what we do because of how we feel passionately about our city to do what we can to hopefully make it the best city we can. I attended a panel on land use, SEQA, and affordable housing covenants. It was essentially a seminar for lawyers mostly, but specifically there was this one case, Keene versus the city of Manhattan Beach. And where that, the reason I zeroed in on that is because there was a thing about short-term rentals being in the coastal zone and how what Manhattan Beach found out was they need to zone and amended their coastal plan so as to accommodate changes that we might make to our short-term rental ordinance down the road. So that was a red flag for me. There was one about defending institutions. It was called promoting civic debate and rejecting personal attacks. I was especially impressed by the Riverside Police Chief who stressed the emotional intelligence of his police department. There was one about equitable and resilient communities. Again, they actually mentioned that whole electrifying your fleet thing. So I remembered the BCE meeting I just had. I attended the Coastal Cities Group where it was great to see that all of our coastal cities really are kind of having similar experiences as we try to work with the Coastal Commission. Recovery lessons, the twenty-seventeen Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa, the twenty-eighteen Camp Fire in Paradise, which that year was the worst emergency in the world. I learned about how fires often start outside of the town. And they, I heard that the severity zone maps should be coming out early next year. So again, fresh in my mind. Mayor Beer was elected the at-large representative for Peninsula Division of the Cal Cities and congratulations, Mayor Beer. I did one on Surplus Land Act, Know the Impact Before You Transact. Again, we've been talking quite a bit and it's been coming up, what exactly the Surplus Land Act means for how the city is conducting its business. So I really wanted to make sure I took the opportunity to get a robust understanding of what the SLA means for us. And I feel like I have a much clearer understanding now. And last but not least, Creative Solutions to Reduced Homelessness. The quote that I walked away with was, this is the issue of our time. They stress the seven principles of the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. Representatives from Berkeley, Orange County, and also San Mateo County were present. It was good to see Mr. Mike Calagui there as they're talking about how we need to help folks to get them off of our streets. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just piggyback on that really quickly about our time in Long Beach. The room was packed when Mike Calagui was was speaking about the work that San Mateo County is doing around homelessness, about the Navigation Center, about Project Room Key with the hotels. It's really innovative work that's happening in San Mateo County, so people should be very proud of that and know that, you know, we need to keep doing the work and keep expanding the work city by city. So I was really proud to be there for that. I know Tiger mentioned all the different kinds of opportunities there were to attend the different workshops. I also went to many different workshops. One conversation that I had that I thought was really interesting was with one of the vendors and it was our Davy Tree company who works in Pacifica all the time. And they were talking about some cow fire grants that are coming up, so I really want to make sure that we contact the people at Davy Tree and start talking about those cow fire grants for defend defensible space, which is what Erin Macias was talking about as well. So things do kind of come together. If we're out there talking to people and like listening and connecting people, we can make things happen here in Pacifica. So that's, that was really informative. Being sworn in as the San Mateo County Outlarge Member of Cal Cities Peninsula Division was an honor. I'll be working with people, mayors mostly from across the county and mayors and council members from South San Francisco, Santa Clara County, Redwood City, Morgan Hill, Cupertino, Mountain View, Birmingham, Los Gatos. So it'll be really great to be able to participate in those conversations and really learn about what our Peninsula Division really needs and bring in all the information we can to keep things going in that way. So I, it's, you know, branding, so I'll let you know what happens with that. It's pretty exciting. Council of Cities was so great at Sanchez Adobe. Usually when we go to Council of Cities dinners, we hear about their like fifty-five million dollar project here and that there and so, but what we brought to the table was an opportunity for our fellow council members to tour the Sanchez Adobe and and go into the Interactive Center, the brand new center at Sanchez Adobe, and they got to hear from Dr. Cordero, who is our Aloney representative. uh Dr. Cordero, who is our um Aloney Repres- Representative, Representative. And he spoke so eloquently. And then we had Mitch from the county. It was really well attended. People were so happy. It was just a new experience for them. So I want to thank Mike O'Neill for having that beautiful idea and putting it all together because it really was Mike's baby. And so, thank you so much, Mike. It was, uh people are talking about, they were talking about that Council of Cities, they were talking about that, but everywhere. They've just been emailing and everything. So it's been great. Um, I attended the Bike and Ped Committee for the um region. And I want you to know that Pacifica's project for pedestrian improvements in Sharp Park passed yet another round of scoring. And so it'll go on to MTC next. And hopefully we will get that funding. I saw our very own San Batista was at that meeting. And so it really matters when we go and we go the extra mile and sit on these regional committees because we can get Pacifica represented. And so, good job for um to our Public Works Department for the applications and all the work that you're doing to bring uh funding into our city. I attended the Bike Park fundraiser. It was totally fun at uh Winters. I also attended the party for Jane Northrup, who is retiring from her work at the Tribune. We will be uh doing a proclamation for her at our next meeting. What a great party that was too. There's music, people dancing. She really deserved it. And we love you, Jane. And we thank you for all your work. And I can't wait to honor you at our next meeting. Um, and then I just really wanted to say that uh Meals on Wheels, we need volunteers. We need volunteers to deliver meals on wheels. So please get that information out there. Please volunteer if you have the time. It's really important that we're able to get the meals out to the people who can't otherwise get out of their homes. Okay, that's all for me. I'll send it over to City Manager Kevin Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Mayor Protem Big Stick and Council Members Kevin Woodhouse. City Manager, I have two brief communications I'd like to provide. The first is about our Housing Element Update Process. There was information in Connect with Pacifica on Friday and soon a mailer will be going out to the community about our first virtual community workshop, which will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at six PM. And uh so look for information. There's uh more information available at PlanPacifica.org and click on the Housing Element link there. Uh, in addition, there's currently an online survey. And there will be another uh community workshop in Oct- or there are actually two more community workshops uh to follow in October. So we're beginning that process and the outreach. So there'll be lots more information coming out about that. The other item I wanted to mention is that there is a uh beach safety uh and surfing safety event that's occurring this Sunday, September eighteenth at Lindemar Beach. And the information about that and how to sign up, it's free. Uh, how to sign up was in Connect with Pacifica as well. But uh just encourage folks to participate in that, to learn about beach safety. I, I learned today that there was an incident at Lindemar Beach where a um a gentleman was in trouble out there and a young uh, a young uh person grabbed a surfboard, got out, helped him out. And it ended perfectly fine, which is, which is great. But um it just speaks to the need for when you're on the beach or in the water, around the water uh to be aware of uh appropriate safety measures. And those were my only two communications today. I, I also wa- was, did spend a day at the Cal Cities Conference uh attending, attending sessions and uh connecting with colleagues. And that was uh very valuable. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on. Does anyone need a break? No, no, no. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number twelve, our pu- public hearing for the evening. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica authorizing the vaca- vacation of portions of Hotel Way to abandon any interest that the city might have to those portions of the street. We have Ray, our Senior Civil Engineer with us tonight to present. Well, Ray, thank you for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, my name is Raymond Dong Guinness, City of Pacifica Senior Civil Engineer. Uh, tonight before you is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica authorizing the vacation of portions of Hotel Way. Next up, next slide please. On October twenty-twenty, the City of Pacifica received a request from adjacent landowner, Mr. Kerry Bosberg, to vacate a portion of Hotel Way located between Pacific Avenue and Brighton Road in the West Shaw Park neighborhood. Hotel Way is a, is a strip of unimproved land approximately two hundred and twenty-one feet long and twenty, twenty feet wide, which runs along the side and rear of five residential properties, which is used as a private rather than public right-of-way. In nineteen oh eight, prior to the city's incorporation, the S- San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, as this legislative body with authority over the area, rejected an offer of dedication of the public easement for street purposes along the area identified as Hotel Way. Thus, the county, as the city's predecessor, did not formally accept Hotel Way as a public right-of-way for public street use. And neither did the city. Further, the city ident- has identified no evidence that might suggest the city's impliedly accepted Hotel Way as a public right-of-way by paving, improving, maintaining, or otherwise treating Hotel Way as a public right-of-way. The city's uh vacation pros- procedure are set forth in Administrative Policy Number Five. Uh, next slide please. As shown, uh again, Hotel Way is a strip of unimproved land approximately two hundred and twenty feet long, twenty, twenty, twenty-one feet long and twenty feet wide, uh which runs uh adjacent to five property uh between Pacific and Brighton Road. Next slide please. Uh, so the summary vacation process, uh the planning commission during its regular meeting of March twenty, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, adopted a resolution certifying that the vacation conforms to the general plan and local coastal land use plan and found that the action exa- is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act. On August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the City of Council during its regular meeting adopted Resolution Number Fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-two, the resolution of intention by the City Council of the City of Pacifica to vacate a portion of Hotel Way and thus setting the public hearing for tonight, September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. A copy of the resolution, along with the notice of public hearing, were advertised in the Pacifica Tribune on August twenty-fourth and August twenty-first, uh thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The resolution and notice of public hearing was also posted at three locations around the subject site, starting on August twenty-fourth. Next slide please. Uh, as this, as the staff report, because the city does not own the land, the underlying Hotel Way uh property in fee simple and the city never accepted the dedicated right-of-way, disposition of the land is not subject to the Surplus Land Act. The State Housing and Community Development Public Lands Team has confirmed that the vacation of Hotel Way is not subject to the SLA. Next slide please. So therefore, the City Manager recommends adoption of the resolution, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica authorizing the vacation of portions of Hotel Way. Uh, that ends my staff report. Uh, we're, we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does Council have any questions at this moment? Okay, then we um will open pub- the public hearing and invite public comment on this item.
Mayor Beer, I have one hand raised. Dan Stedjik. Okay, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Council Members. Can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. Um, when I read through the agenda here, I see a name I'm not familiar with. But this appears to be a continuation of a March first, twenty-sixteen lawsuit, CIV five-three-five-two-three-seven filed by Robin Rueniels et al. versus the City of Pacifica et al. Um, it appears Ms. Rueniels is a, a adjacent homeowner to this four thousand four hundred and sixty-foot plot, twenty by two hundred and twenty-three feet. The approximate value of this plot is two point three million dollars. It appears that this does fall under the Surplus Land Act and that we are essentially ceding an asset of the public to uh this group of people who have filed this complaint. And it appears that several of you have received political donations from Ms. Rueniels. And out of an abundance of propriety, you should probably recuse yourself further from this conversation. Uh, Ms. Beckmeyer in particular has received political contributions from Ms. Rueniels and should recuse herself immediately. Thank you.
There's one more hand raised, a Remy Tan. Okay, please state your name for the record.
Hi, Remy Tan. Again, the specific matter. Um, that's kind of interesting. I was wondering about if the city um owns this or not. And it sounds like uh that is in question. So um not having, you know, enough information, they uh would urge the City Council to kind of table this one, uh find out whether the city actually owns this parcel or not. Um, and if so, um, you know, would be subject to Surplus Lands Act. And um the city would be required to sell the parcel to, you know, the, the adjacent owners and not just give it away for free. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
No other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we can close the public hearing and bring it back for council deliberation and direction. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney, I have a question for you. Hi, Michelle. I do believe that I took money from Robin Rueniels during my last campaign. Do I need to recuse myself from this item? Do I have a conflict of interest?
No, there's a specific exemption in the law for campaign contributions. Simply receiving a campaign contribution from anybody who comes before the city does not warrant um recusal based on the Political Reform Act.
Okay, I mean, she helped me knock on doors. I regard her as a friend. I don't need to recuse?
No, you do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I went ahead and um, you know, like I said, I actually attended a forum on the Surplus Land Act and the staff analysis satisfied me. But um just to, you know, put a fine point on the uh of staff, is there any reason why um HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, might regard Hotel Way as city surplus land and thus require an exemption from the Surplus Land Act before allowing us to vacate this unimproved land? Please explain. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Um, I wanted to answer that question when I heard the public comment or so. Uh, no, the city does not own that land. It is a right-of-way that has never been accepted by the city. And it is not subject to the Surplus Lands Act. We got this confirmed by HCD in a written confirmation from them. We um wanted to confirm our opinion. And so we spoke to uh the Housing and Community Development Department of the state, and they confirmed through an email that we do not um have to comply with the Surplus Lands Act for this vacation.
I appreciate that. It seems as though the Department of Housing and Community Development is not true, messing around lately when it comes to these matters. So that we uh made sure to verify through them that this is not surplus lands well ahead of time. I deeply appreciate. Thank you.
Council Members, anybody else have any comments or? Um, I appreciate the explanation from um City Attorney. I think it's, it's really necessary for us to um say things as many times as we can so people are sure to hear them, right? That this is not city-owned land. Yes, I appreciate that. And um, did, did anybody else want to comment on that? I see, I see, Ray, you have unmuted. Did you want to say something?
No, no, I have not.
Okay. Okay, I was gonna let you have the opportunity if you wanted to. Okay, so this de- seems very straightforward to me.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, please, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica authorizing the vacation of portions of Hotel Way to abandon any interest that they, the city may have to those portions of the street.
Second.
I have the motion made by Council Member O'Neill and seconded by Council Member Votolos. I'll start the roll call vote with Council Member Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Council Member Votolos.
Yes.
Council Member O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that item passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll now move on to our consideration item, which is updates to the City Council Rules and Codes of Ethics. City Manager Woodhouse will be here to present to us.
Thank you, Mayor Beer, Mayor Protem Big Stick, and Council Members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I will uh provide a, a brief verbal presentation. And then uh as I conferred with the mayor in going through the recommended revisions to this policy, we will bring up the track change uh version of the policy and sort of go page by page as the council did uh similarly for the Sharp Park specific plan and the, and the general plan process. So we can see if there's any uh questions and comments or revisions on, on the page by page review. But first, um, you know, the city uh has an ongoing goal of improving administrative and council policies uh as time permits over time. And the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics hasn't been touched since twenty-fourteen. And so the council had recommended and assigned a two-person ad hoc uh subcommittee consisting of Mayor Protem Big Stick and Council Member O'Neill back in January to work with myself and the City Attorney and the City Clerk in looking at the policy and uh recommending, bringing together, researching, recommending updates based on best practices, based on consistency with current practices, based on legal uh issues that have changed over the intervening eight years since the policy was last revised. And for summary, the, the code is really intended to establish the standards for the roles, responsibilities, and expectations of the governing board and staff in the operation of the organization, promoting communication, understanding, and trust in these roles, responsibilities and expectations, and helping to make city council meetings as productive as possible. And the code really addresses a broad range of topics, which include operation of city council meetings, order of the agenda, council communications, council member and public decorum, city council relationship with city staff, and other administrative matters. The uh, since January, the ad hoc subcommittee met with staff twice and worked on revisions that are before you tonight. And as I mentioned, the, the different categories of revisions recommended, as will be seen when we go through the track changes. There are, there are a lot of, uh include a lot of formatting and clarification updates, uh clarification regarding city council current practices uh and consistency with state law. There are a handful of, um in addition to sort of the uh perfunctory updates, there's a handful of uh more substantive uh clarifications and updates. And, and those will certainly be talked about uh and, and more specifically taking input on those as we do go through each of those through the, throughout this process. That completes my, my brief overview. And um I'm available for any questions at this point.
Thank you.
And I should, I should say that the City Attorney and the City Clerk were also uh very involved. involved in this process, and so, of course, they're available for questions and participating in our discussion as well.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any questions before we go to public comment? Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want clarification on what your vision is, how we're going to go through this, because I think Kevin mentioned going through it page by page, and you intend on doing that after public comment?
After public comment.
Okay, so that be it the case, I'd like to ask a question slash observe a little before we go to public comment, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And specifically because I've received, and I imagine y'all have received, a little public comment about a specific part of this on packet page 339, which is page 19 of the document itself, under number three. And I was, well, so I want to read it, and then I just want to ask for clarification. That's where I'm coming from. So this is the part about how council members can ask to put something on the agenda. And what I want to point out, while I have the red line directly in front of me, is that that first sentence there is completely unchanged, and that first sentence reads, "An individual council member may agendize an item for a city council meeting by contacting the city manager." Again, any city council member can agendize any item by contacting the city manager. And then afterward, it goes on to say, and this is the revision at this point, "Potentially controversial items and items that may require more than one hour of staff time to sufficiently analyze and prepare a staff report for council consideration will be first agendized to ask the city council if staff time should be spent on preparing a report on the proposed item. Requests from council members to place an item on the agenda shall be made to the city manager a minimum of 10 days before the next city council meeting. Depending on the state legislation, the city manager may, shall consult with the mayor about when a proposed item should be agendized for council consideration." So what I wanted to kind of highlight by asking the question ahead of time, is this saying that it takes more than one council member to agendize something? And could you get at the reason why we went over this? My understanding being that this retains the ability for any council member to put anything on the agenda. Then if it's a substantive issue where it might require more than an hour of staff time, at that point, it's agendized in such a fashion that we can talk amongst ourselves whether or not we have majority buy-in, so that we can then send the issue to be fleshed out much deeper. And the adjustment from seven days to 10 days specifically kind of comes as a result of, at least lately, having fairly limited staff resources and making sure that if it's something that's important enough to a council member, that they're able to agendize it, US city staff have the ability to stick it on the agenda, enough time to get the work done so that everything can get done. Please, is my understanding so far in alignment with what you recall? And do you have any further feedback on that particular section?
Thank you. And that's a question, that's a question for me, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill, okay.
Or if other staff has insight, I welcome that insight.
Yeah, I think you summarized that provision very well. There are two aspects to it. One aspect just relates to the timing of introducing an item. As the council is aware, we have the practice of releasing our agenda package five days in advance of a council meeting, whereas the Brown Act only requires three days in advance. With a seven-day in advance request to place an item on the agenda, that literally only allows two days for staff to research and write a report, and those two days happen at a time when myself and staff are very busy with all of the agenda reports and finalizing the packet. So the 10-day recommendation, or I should say at least 10 days, is, just formalizes that rule to allow a little bit more bandwidth there for the preparation of that staff report. The, and in practice, the council has always been very good about being cognizant of the time required and, you know, the time urgency issue and saying, you know, I'd like to suggest this item, but, you know, it can wait for a month, or it can be a few meetings from now, et cetera. So, you know, and I provide the feedback about staff availability and resources in that process. And then, and like you mentioned, the other part of it is really, the key issue here is that for any item, any city business item that takes a lot of staff time, staff resources, and money, public money, to work on, that's always directed by a majority of the city council. So you set the budget, you conduct goal setting annually to drive our priorities and where staff resources are going to be spent. And so, when individually requested agenda items come up, if it's a controversial item that's going to take a lot of staff research and time and require a lot of work to write the report, then appropriately, that needs to be directed by a majority of the city council. So the concept would be, we can tee up a very brief and quick staff reports, so the council can discuss whether that's a priority for the city council, majority of the city council for staff to work on. And I should emphasize here, one of the key aspects and the importance of this provision is that it is my responsibility to bring forward to the council complete staff reports that provide as much information as we can bring together about issues, so the council can deliberate with all of the appropriate facts on an issue. So we're not doing anyone from the public, from the council, or anyone a favor if there is incomplete information brought forward to the council. So that's another part of the driver. I hope that answered or kind of validated the way you were thinking about it as well.
Sure, and a couple of follow-ups. This rule, there's nothing in it to preclude that single council person who agendizes this item from speaking robustly to their fellow council members, why they've agendized that item and why it's important to them, that they have city staff directed to take a further look on whatever that item happens to be, correct?
Correct, and that's what mostly happens, is often the report will say, you know, council member so-and-so has raised this item, and as part of the presentation, the council member, you know, can, you know, give part of that presentation or state why they felt it important for the council to consider.
Coming out of a goal setting in which we only added one new item onto the work plan because of how acutely we're aware of how valuable time, staff time is right now. As we went over best practices in other places, and there's some municipalities where you need two council people to put something on the agenda, by the way, but as we looked over best practices, it's very common in other cities that it's, you know, an hour rule or two-hour rule. If it takes longer than that to create a staff report, you need greater council buy-in. And so, we verified this against other city best practices before coming to the conclusion this would help us to streamline time a little bit without taking away, because that was very important to me, without taking away the ability for one council person to agendize an item. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer. You're on mute.
Thank you. I was, actually, my question wasn't about this topic. It's actually, I have a question for the city attorney in regard to the updating of policies such as these. I understand from the staff report that ours was last updated in 2014, and in your experience, is this something that's done every year, every two years, every 10 years? How frequently do councils go over these rules?
Well, I can answer that. It is not done frequently, and actually, 10 years is usually, I have seen that happen regularly every 10 years, but it also has been shorter, because these, these rules and policies are exactly as they say, they are city council rules and policies. And very often, it is up to the council in place to determine if they want to follow those rules and protocols. And so, if, you know, if there is a new council in place that feels that they want to change the protocols, then they may want to do that. So it can happen sooner than 10 years, but the norm that I've seen is anywhere between five and 10 years.
I see. Okay, thank you. I just have no frame of reference. I know this was something that we talked about, and it did need to get pushed a little bit in light of other priorities, so that's why I was trying to reacquaint myself with the timing framework. Thank you.
Councilmember Votarlos.
This is just a semantics issue, but can we change oral communications to public comment? We say it all the time as public comment. I just like it better.
Good question. I was going to also bring that question up.
Once again, this is totally up to the five of you to decide. So perhaps when you have your deliberations, you can discuss that. There's no legal reason to call it public comment or oral communications. It really is at the pleasure of the council.
Okay, do we have any more questions before we go to public comment? All right, let's open up public comment. Thank you, Elizabeth. We have two hands raised at this time. Our first hand raised is Jeremy, followed by Dan Stedjic. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jeremy Carpenter, and I have two comments on the proposal. The first is, I feel that this proposed change to the rules would have the effect of silencing dissent. It almost seems like a filibuster, you know? I just don't think it's going to be good for a democratic debate or discussion about, you know, matters of importance to the community or to the city council. And then the other point I want to make is there's this comment on council members expressing their view in a negative manner, and it's full of subjective language, leaving the dais in anger or disgust, emphasizing a point of view solely for the purpose of playing to the audience, unrelated to the issue before the council, using the dais for strictly personal purpose, addressing the media for political purposes rather than addressing the council as a body, purposely misstating the facts of an issue for political purposes, or monopolizing discussion time, including posing too many questions on an issue that do not facilitate furthering deliberation or a general understanding to bring the issue to a conclusive decision. That's all very vague, subjective language, and, you know, again, it seems like you're trying to squash dissent and kind of extinguish any kind of democratic, you know, process in these hearings or in these meetings. So that's my comment on these proposed changes.
Thank you, Jeremy. Going now to Dan Stedjic, who will be followed by Erin Messias. Please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you, council members. My name's Dan Stedjic. The last time this happened, I believe, was when the now disgraced Benicio Walnut City Creek manager tried to do this about seven years ago. It's never been a problem. I don't think you need to streamline meetings. You've had one public meeting in, what, two and a half years now? You're doing this from home. Some of you do this from a hotel in Paris sometimes. In a public meeting where you had six respondents, you cut them to two minutes each and had less than 24 minutes of total public comment. Pacifica's never had an Asian council member. Pacifica's never had a Latino council member. Pacifica's never had a Black council member. When we do get one, if they're on minority, you'll immediately be relegating them to a lesser position. Respect the rule of the voters. That's why we, that's why district elections were implemented, but, you know, after a threat of a lawsuit from attorney Kevin Shankman. One of the reasons Lindemar keeps flooding is because we haven't had dedicated competent representation. Staff reports are inaccurate or incomplete on a monthly, if not weekly, basis. The library bond issued required a complete revote after a city attorney error. Pacifica's Estates Evictions were halted after a city attorney error. The oversized RV ordinance was halted after an error in a $1 million lawsuit. Happens all the time. I would suggest that you leave things exactly as they are. I would suggest that you treat any incoming minority, Latino, Black, or Asian council member as an equal. And I would suggest if you're doing anything to the Code of Conduct, you adopt a permanent ban against giving any political donor part of a $2.4 million parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Erin Messias, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Erin Messias of Lindemar. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. First, it was mentioned that this need was previously discussed. Just kind of a general question, was this in goal setting? Because I don't know. Secondly, I would have to agree with Jeremy's comments in silencing dissent and also Dan's comments as well. If a council member wants more information about an agenda item, they must go through this city manager, not staff, but the city manager, that language is specific, who will make a reasonable effort to provide information. Well, if the city is short-staffed, which they chronically are, this reasonable effort may be none at all. The language then also restricts the ability to ask collateral questions, which may not directly further deliberations, but collateral questions may lead to a deeper understanding of a given issue, and these amendments should be tabled, and the entire council should rethink the long-term ramifications of such a change. What this does is give unreasonable power to the city manager, and it reduces the ability of an elected official to actually question him. The language takes away from the fundamental deliberative democracy our country was founded upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Suzanne Moore, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Dinah Verbi. Please state your name for the record.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Suzanne Moore, and for once, I'm commenting in an unprepared fashion. I was listening to Tiger, and I really believe that many of the things that one of the council members will bring forward for the agenda is based on community concerns, and the community has approached that champion on the council and said, "We have a really big concern." And so, I would hesitate to create any kind of barrier to have the community approach a council member and then have it in any way stopped, because other members on council have the ability to not have it agendized. And so, I just want to put that big concern out there, that this is obviously the community that has brought something forward through one of their members to agendize something. And gosh darn, there was some other point I was going to make, but I'm totally escaping it, but that was my big point, that I really feel that we are talking about the voice of the community, and that that should be honored. Thanks.
Thank you, Suzanne. Dinah Verbi, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Remi Tan.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Dinah Verbi, can you confirm that you're hearing me? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, well, I'm opposed to this, uh, to these changes with regard to the section eleven point three creating a new restriction on what is currently an unfettered right of a council member to have an item agendized. If I understand it correctly, an item that is quote potentially controversial, which is not defined, or, or if it requires more than one hour of staff time, cannot be agendized for full discussion or a full report unless the majority of the council agrees. On its base, this is an anti-democratic proposal. It potentially means that a minority of two council members can quash public debate on an item they don't agree on. And the reason I'm saying that is that the rule is not specific as to how many council members are required to agendize an item. Is it a majority of the whole council, which would be three or more members? Or a majority of the council members in attendance? If it's the latter and only three council members are in attendance, that means that two council members, a minority of the council, can prevent an item from being agendized. And all of this apparently would happen without the opportunity for any public input on the merits of the item. I think this proposal undermines the intent of district elections, which are that each district, each neighborhood have its own representative. So that if we want something put on an agenda, we go to our district representative and they can do that for us. Um, I understand the need to conserve staff resources. I'm sympathetic to it. But I, I'm afraid that the committee didn't really think this through in terms of the impact on the public and how it would be perceived by the voters. One of your goals is to expand community engagement, but this proposal actually does the opposite. Many cities have policies that expressly allow citizens, citizens to request an item to be put on the agenda. Pacifica does not. And now it's proposing a rule that would even further minimize public input by preventing council consideration. It also delegates too much authority to the city manager to unilaterally determine what is potentially controversial and how much staff time is required. Why would the council cede its own power to staff in this manner? This is not why you were elected and I don't believe it's what the voters want. Finally, I think this is ill-timed because it's right before a city council election, which could result in potentially two new council members. It seems unfair and unseemly to change the rules and tie the hands of incoming council members. I don't think the voters will look kindly on this and I urge you to either defeat it and vote it down or postpone it until after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dinah.
Remy Tan, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Christine Bowles. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, uh, Remy Tan. Can you hear me?
I can, Remy.
Hi, uh, Remy Tan from uh, uh, Pacific Manor. Um, I agree with the, the previous speakers on, on this item. Seems like there's a lot of uh, vague and not specific language or opinionated language that needs to be kind of carefully vetted by the city attorney. Um, and uh, there's also a couple, you know, concerning thing about the agenda items um, being put on by the council. As well, I saw something in there about um, limitation of um, deliberations by council that, you know, if, if the council person can't um, you know, basically get to the point, um, the debate could be shut down, which is um, kind of uh, you know, disturbing with sometimes, you know, debate goes long because their additional items come back and I've seen many time on the council as well as, you know, uh, in planning commission that, you know, one council person says something and it triggers something else um, that, that could be very, very important to the matter at hand. So definitely that new language should be stricken um, from, from, uh, from the document. One of the issues that I, you know, did notice and, you know, attending last several council meetings is how late they go. And um, I think something needs to be done about that because um, I saw several of the council people um, actually nod off. And that's really not due to their fault, it's their own, but it's, you know, due to lateness of the hour. So um, I think it, it should be thought out, maybe the council meetings happen every week or, or, you know, the staff has to carefully consider what's on the agenda and if there's something controversial, which you would know by the submitted comments, you know, before the meeting, that, that item's going to be very controversial, that, you know, uh, you know, other items need to be tabled or pulled or, you know, preferably that's done, you know, well in advance. Um, which, you know, we have a very, very active community and, you know, people do send in um, a lot of comments ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
Christine Bowles, you're our next speaker, followed by the user owner. Please state your name for the record.
Um, good evening, council. Uh, this is Christine Bowles. I um, agree with all the speakers um, ahead of me and, and um, especially Dinah Verbi who um, said it so eloquently that um, I, I too fear that um, uh, some of these changes um, really undermine our democratic processes and um, ability to, to bring important items for discussion amongst the council, but also um, to the public. Um, and, and I actually object to the way this process was taken tonight, that we don't actually get the staff report first um, to discuss all the changes um, to this. You know, I, I know many members of the public don't read the whole agenda and are looking for a presentation to be able to make their comments. So I, um, anyway, I think, I think that was really done poorly. Let's see, um, my notes are scattered too. So a- again, but as other people were saying, you know, there's a lot that's still defined. Who, on, on item eleven point three, who defines what is controversial? Is that the mayor? Is that the city manager? And honestly, one hour of staff time as a limit basically limits every single item. I mean, writing one page of a staff agenda would take an hour. So what, you know, uh, uh, to, to me, that means that every single item is going to need to go before the council to get a vote before it's agendized. I, I don't think that limit is reasonable at all. Um, I'm just going to read you um, uh, a section from Hapman Bay's ordinance. Does individual council members may make requests of city staff through the city manager or department head for limited research and information without the formal concurrence of a majority of the members' colleagues. Requests that will require significant staff time may be referred to the full council and only pursued if supported by the majority of the council. The city manager should be kept aware of all requests. So, uh, one, this is saying the council doesn't need to necessarily go through the city manager, but two, there's a big difference between limited research and significant staff time. And again, I would argue that one hour is not enough for anything. And does the public get to comment on the agendized item discussion? Uh, that's not really answered in here either. And I agree that the meetings go too long. That also is written in the, in the Hapman Bay's um, council description, that meetings should not go beyond eleven. I mean, as um, Mayor Beer has eloquently said in the newspaper article, that, you know, it's hard for her brain, but it's also very difficult for the public to be engaged that late at night. We all have jobs and children and families. Um, and um, I, I would like to see some changes in how, how meetings are organized and timed um, for better public input.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine.
Username Owner, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Summer Lee. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is actually Mark Hubbell. My computer calls me Owner, but I don't usually go by that name. But anyways, here's my fear. And, you know, I've lived here in Pacifica long enough to know that each of the districts have really decidedly different type, types of environmental issues. I mean, here in the back of the valley is quite a bit different than in the uh, you know, the front of uh, Book, uh, Beach Boulevard, for example. And I know that, that it, when we bring up these individual issues and the other areas don't understand them, I feel like they often maybe un- unnecessarily, or I shouldn't say that, I, I, I didn't write up anything in advance, but, but just say that, that they kind of marginalize them by just their lack of understanding of that area. And I'm sure I'm guilty of it too. But with this new proposal, I can easily see where a majority would squelch um, a, someone that that district went to, you know, their councilperson to seek some sort of a, you know, understanding of it or get something done. And I just think it's just too easy for the other to say, nah, nah, you know, we're not going to do it. And I really can see that, that kind of thing happening and I think I've seen it happen before. So that's what I have to say. I'm very much against that, that new plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Summer Lee, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Rick Nejas. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. Um, I just want to add my voice to the voices who have already spoken very well on this topic for um, three eleven. And just say again that in the era that finally Pacific is moving to district elections to increase input from marginalized areas of the city, that this is a weirdly timed change to require a majority of council to back um, an agendizing of an item that's deemed uh, mysteriously as uh, controversial or taking too much time. And I also want to say that it's not clear to me, the leap in logic, that this would actually streamline a meeting and make sure it doesn't go later or um, make less work for staff, which I understand is an issue, but this is not clear to me how that does um, fix that in any way. And that, it's also a non-necessary change at this moment. Um, and I, I really hope, and it's not been the the recent history of this council to listen to the people during public comment, but I really hope tonight is a change where you guys listen to all the speakers tonight who have asked you to consider this meaningfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer.
Rick Nejas, you'll be followed by Cindy Abbott. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Rick Nejas. I live in Sharp Park. Um, I'm just a little confused as I read this section eleven, item three. Um, there are strikeouts in the, in, on the sentences that say, um, city council decision shall require the majority of approved, approval of the city council. So, does that mean that that was there before and now you're taking that away? So I, I don't know if somebody could clarify that or not. Um, I, I think um, it's important to note that if the intent, as the city manager says, is for this to streamline a meeting, it's always possible that that goes counter to allowing people to have a voice, right? And um, allowing people to have a voice, a lot of times, as other, as other um, people have mentioned, can cause the meetings to go really late, at one o'clock in the morning. So there might be other thoughts about, you know, if people do think they're not being heard, um, maybe there's other things that the um, the city council can do outside of interacting just with the staff, but acting with, interacting with people. Um, you know, I could, I could suggest some of those, but, um, and I know they work hard and I know they're accessible, they're accessible to me. But uh, again, maybe there's other things they can do. The other question I have is, is, does this just apply to the city council meeting? Or does it apply to like a lot of the meetings? Like we've had general plan meetings. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick.
Cindy Abbott, you're our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Abbott in West Sharp Park. I appreciated the questions raised by council members earlier about the process that were responded to by the city attorney. She noted that these rules are set by council members who will be following the rules that they set. We're here in September with November elections just a little bit away. If history serves us as to the meeting schedule, this puts us at about only five regular meetings of this city council to be held. And yet, we're talking about setting rules for an extended period of time. This item should be tabled and brought back up by the council that will be decided by them in January twenty twenty-three. While it was shared that staff and two council members meant to bring this forward, I really wish that there had been some additional public outreach in seeking input for this. Because we all attend these meetings too. We are part of these meetings. You ask us to be part of these meetings and to be engaged. So we should also be able to make comment like we are tonight, but we should be able to do it right before the time when it's going to be voted on. An item that I'd like to have considered in this conversation is a much more robust review of the appeal process. We've seen a lot of appeals lately and nothing suggests that they're going to lessen up. So maybe we could change things like having a full ten minutes for an appellant who has spent the time and effort and money to file an appeal, to have a full ten minutes to be able to present their case with an additional three minutes for rebuttal if they want it. There are small things that should be looked into this or that might not be important or feel important to staff or to council, but they are important to the public. Tying into another commenter's comment, I had put in a letter earlier as well, an email, that I really think that a full staff report and much more robust council discussion should take place prior to public comment being requested. It doesn't really give us a chance to respond to what we're hearing. In summary, I agree with a lot of the other comments, including Dinah Verbi's, that this should be tabled until one of the first meetings in twenty twenty-three. And I suggest broader public outreach about meetings be part of the subcommittee review process, so we aren't at another uncomfortable point like we are this evening. Thank you so much.
Mayor Beer, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we can close public comment and bring it back to council.
Right, Mayor Beer?
Yeah.
So there was a, a fairly consistent theme in a lot of the public comments. And I think as Mayor Protem Bigstick asked about prior to public comments, um, in trying to clarify what that agendizing rule does or doesn't change, I still feel like there's a lot of misunderstanding from the comments about what that rule does. And I'm wondering if, if you would like me and the city attorney to uh, to continue to, to explain that a little bit more? Or if the council members want to, uh, you know, continue, you know, during deliberations, sort of express your views on it, uh, without us jumping in to explain. But I just wanted to ask that, that question now.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I am concerned that there's no, not enough understanding. I'm also concerned that that I decided to do the full chapter by chapter discussion. And I guess I didn't realize that that was going to limit the amount of information that was given to the public before they had a public comment. Um, I thought it was actually going to be a more thorough review of the document so that everyone could review it, that, that community could hear us do the, the full review and then we could send it backward direction. So I, I fear that not, that must have been, uh, I might have made a mistake there. And maybe it might be good to have a much more thorough explanation. And I don't know if you had a PowerPoint or anything else that can be brought up so people can see the information again. And what does my council think of that?
And I just answer your, your quick question. I, I don't have a PowerPoint prepared on the, on the document. I mean, uh, ninety, ninety-five percent of the changes recommended in here are fairly, um, you know, uh, language clarifications and, and whatnot. There's really, uh, only, uh, in my opinion, only a few substantive issues that I figured the council would, uh, Only, in my opinion, only a few substantive issues that I figured the council would dig into discuss. Including potentially start time of council meetings, which relates to the late hour issue that comments that have come up lately. Potentially the appeal hearing timing that was just mentioned. And then the provision that was talked about regarding agendizing meetings. And there may be one or two other substantive ones that come up. But. You know, let let me know if or when you'd like me to step back and try to explain more thoroughly the agendizing of items question.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now, and we can do it again when we discuss it.
Okay, so let me start with the fact that every city council decision is made by a majority vote of the council. That's what that's how our local government democracy works. And that's what in deciding and approving the budget. In deciding and approving goals and priorities for the fiscal year. And every single item that the council considers on an agenda is decided by a majority of the council. Each year, the the council approves what the city staff work plan is. And throughout the year. Periodically, there are important priority issues that come up from the community or or from council members. That can be agendized to be discussed. And there's nothing in this rule that prevents that from happening. And what, again, changes and the can council members are always mindful of. How much staff time is something gonna take and, you know, should this be an item that gets kicked to goal setting to be prioritized amongst all of the other priorities that that the city is working on? The when an issue comes up. If it is a major issue, then the point and one of the best practices in most cities that I'm aware of have this practice. And as a matter of fact, one of the commentators read an excerpt from Half Moon Bay, which is not inconsistent at all with what is being recommended in these rules. We it's it's virtually the same thing is that if there's a time consuming item. Then a very quick staff report can be prepared and brought to the council for the council to decide how and when and if to handle that item. And and that's how it currently works. This rule is just making it more specific and changing the seven day timeline to. A ten day timeline for before a council meeting for requesting that item. And I want to ask the city attorney if she has any additional clarification that I didn't articulate well enough regarding that rule. But the theme that I'm getting at is it it seems like. The the comments from members of the community said that. This change would interfere with, you know, civic discourse and debate and, you know. All of that process and it doesn't do that.
Well, and I don't have anything new to add. I can sort of emphasize what the city manager has already said. And that is. This eleven point three with regard to the agendizing of items from council members. In no way limits any one council member from placing an item on the agenda. That is clear. So one one council member may be able. To go to the city manager ten days before the agenda posting. And may request that an item be put on the agenda, and that item will be put on the agenda. The question is, if that request requires a significant amount of time, which is a very common term as, you know. There, you know, almost every city has city councils and protocols and rules. The issue comes, what, how do you define a significant amount of time? And I can tell you that in most cities that I've seen protocols. It varies from half an hour to an hour to two hours at the most. And that is based on what the council decides is is significant. So in terms of whether it should be a half an hour, an hour or two hours, that is something that the council can't, you know, should and can deliberate on. But in terms of whether or not there it should be a definition for what is a significant amount of time. I do recommend, and I and I I do in all cities where I'm the city attorney, that that significant amount of time be defined. Simply because, as you've heard tonight, it just creates confusion. And it's very hard for staff to make that determination, you know, individually. But, you know, just to, you know, sort of wrap up. The the section eleven point three relating to agendizing in no way eliminates. The democratic vote and the. The way that our democracy is intended to work, we work by majority vote. So. And in this instance, in fact, we are allowing any council member without even another council member to support that request. In a lot of communities, it does require at a minimum two council members to agree to place an item on the agenda. And that has to be agendized. That is not what we have in these rules because, you know, the Ad Clock Committee has determined that, no. They do want individual council members to be able to place an item on the agenda. That was something that was important to the subcommittee, and I believe that's important to the council. So, you know, I thank the city manager for, you know, clarifying that because I think that's a very important issue to make sure that the council understands.
And thank you. Then are there any comments before we start looking at the document? Give you the opportunity to say something now. Okay, if not, we're gonna start at the beginning of the document, the very beginning. Which is packet page three twenty two. Page two of the document.
And city clerk coffee. Or management list Brooks, whoever's running the document, are you able to enlarge it or make it full screen? Should be a way where we're just seeing the the document, I think in the lower. Right corner, perhaps, if you if you click on or or yeah, that'll do it.
That'll do it.
Great, thank you. And and Mayor Beer, as you go through, if if there's any sort of editorial comments in explaining. Kind of the rationale behind certain revisions, I'm happy to jump in as the city attorney and city clerk.
I think one more one more thing before we start with. The view of the document, can you get rid of the toolbar just so we can see only the document? I guess that's what I was looking for when you said that. I know it's horrible when people are actually watching you try to do something in the moment, so I apologize for that. So, yeah, take a moment and see if if that's possible to do. In the meantime. We can discuss this because it's deliberation time, correct? I'm very concerned about about the comments and and the perception of the community right now. I think that there's a perception that we don't listen to them and. And I know I I try my best to listen to everybody and to address everything that's brought up. And I I know that Mayor Protem is actually super good at that. So I feel like we do that as as often as we can. But this, yeah, the the comments, I'm just really concerned, so I really want to make sure that we address everything before we. Make a decision.
Do we just make the comments when we get to that section?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Sarah or Elizabeth, for doing that. Okay, so the first change is here. Whereas establish standards by adopted city council rules. Anybody have any comments on this change? And just feel free to unmute and speak, you know, I'm not gonna be able to see all your hands or anything, so just feel free. Okay, let's go to the next page, please.
The council meeting starting at seven.
Yeah, and I was gonna point out that one revision there was it's been council's practice to. At the ten o'clock timeline to take the vote, not nine o'clock. So that was making it consistent with current council practice.
Well, we usually take the vote at eleven, actually.
And it actually does say, one of the commenters made said that. There was another ordinance that stated that council meetings need to be need to end by eleven P M, and ours actually does state that. It just says that we end that we can make a a vote to extend the meeting.
Yeah.
Do we want, I know as part of the committee, Tiger and I were discussing starting meetings at six.
Was it six or was it six thirty? I recall it as six thirty.
I I believe it was six thirty that was discussed and.
So do we want, does the majority want that start at six thirty or keep seven?
What are other cities doing? Are there cities around us that start at six thirty?
I I, yeah, go ahead, city attorney.
Well, I can just tell you that since COVID. That for some reason, a lot of cities are moving their meeting start times earlier. And, you know, for different reasons, but that's been my experience. That moving meetings to begin earlier than seven thirty or seven P M is sort of what I'm. Noticing for the reasons that you've heard from public commenters. There there is, there's a feeling all around the state, I believe, that. Trying to get business done during normal business hours or therefore, you know, so to speak. For council meetings i- is something that a lot of cities are are trying to grapple with for what it's worth.
I would propose that we start at six because by the time you do roll call, pledge of allegiance, land acknowledgement. And all that, you're probably pretty close to six thirty to when we can start the consent calendar. So then when members of the public wanna come, six thirty is, you know, after they get off work or whatever, they're they can make it.
I don't mind starting at six, but if we have closed session. Some, I mean, an hour before, some closed sessions, we've had two items and we have to do two hours before. I'm not sure everybody is capable of doing that.
Closed session and study sessions, I'll add, we we often will have an hour long study session before a regular start time.
Right.
Well, in those cases, couldn't we just have the closed session started at six and then the agenda say seven? For the public part?
But you can't change what the public's, you can't change that time on a whim. I mean, it has to be consistent.
Yeah, I agree.
Prior to being on council, I would work eleven to eight shifts, and so I specifically would have to request Mondays off. To be able to be at the meeting on time. And then subsequent to joining council, I've limited my hours of availability to five P M. I still take Mondays off. I couldn't handle it otherwise, but I I'm sensitive to the nine to five sensibility. And I I didn't want to go any earlier than six thirty for the reasons mentioned. I thought maybe that could be a happy medium so that we get in a little earlier, get out a little earlier, but that was where I landed.
Is there a consensus of six thirty?
I I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary. I think people are really used to a seven P M start time. I think it might be confusing for folks, and then they're gonna miss things. That might be a weird adjustment. That's just how I feel about that.
And then you have to take into consideration what happens at one A M. Because there are a lot of tons only go to one A M, and we'd only be there till twelve thirty if we started a half hour earlier.
I don't know if we have a consensus or not. It doesn't feel like it.
I don't hear a majority anytime, to be honest with you.
I've been thinking about people, I mean, work, the world of work has changed so much since the pandemic. So. But in, you know, the past, the idea that people would be trying to commute to get home, to get to an in person meeting. At council chambers. And for that matter, numerous boards and committees that I've participated in the community. Had their meetings starting at seven P M, specifically because of people's commute hours.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I find it really hard to get to the six P M OS pack meeting. Like, that's that's a struggle for me, and I'm usually late. So I stay, say, keep it at seven.
I think we need to. I I think the question is, is there some way to tighten up? Either the agenda setting process or the. You know, timing of our meetings. That would help make them not so late. I get the idea of starting earlier to make the meeting end earlier. But I don't think starting earlier is very practical. So what else can we do, in other words, to keep from one o'clock in the morning meetings and such?
The other option that we discussed is the planning commission. Used to have the first and third Monday, and then like the fourth Wednesday of the month was always their scheduled study session day. I don't know if they still do that, but when I was on it, that's what they did. Do we want to consider second and fourth Monday, and then let's say the second Wednesday of every month would be our. Third meeting of the month if we need to have one because of issues. And is that legal, city attorney? So that some months we have it on the second Wednesday, and then then some months we don't have it on the second Wednesday.
Yes, that is legal, and and you can do that. And and we have done it, as you know, even without, you know, a change in these protocols. So we can always schedule special meetings, which that would be since it's not a regular meeting.
No, but. Okay, so even if we always say second Wednesday, and I'm just using that as a placeholder. I mean, I'm open to whatever date. But that would always be a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You only have two regular meetings a month.
Okay.
Unless unless you want to change to have three regular meetings a month. But the what that means is that you have to have three regular meetings a month, three regular meetings a month, unless the council were to. You know, cancel. The third regular meeting. So what most cities do is they have two regular meetings a month, and then if the council at that time. As I said, these rules are very, you know, council specific. If at the time the council feels that, you know, given what they are facing in the next year, given their. Goal settings and their goal priorities. That they are going to have a lot to do in this next year, they they simply agree that we will keep every third Monday available for special meetings. third Monday available for special meetings. And then the manager and staff always know that, okay, if we need a special meeting, this is the Monday when councils usually keep their calendars open. It will be easy to schedule.
I would, I find it much easier if I have a set date to schedule meetings, too, what I mean? Like always, and I'm just saying second Wednesday, okay, but the second Wednesday of the month, I just keep pre is council meetings.
Yeah, I agree. Having a placeholder would help my schedule and anyone else is unsure, new council coming in, right, that they know to have that.
I mean, if we want to, we could have, you know, third Wednesday because then we, you know, there won't be two in one week.
Depends on committee and commission meetings, too.
Yeah, I think that's emergency preparedness.
Oh, is it? Okay, well, I don't have that big calendar in front of me. I'm just. I mean, I would kind of favor that, but if we start at seven, and then if we need a third meeting in a month, we always have a set date. That we do it.
What do you think about that, Sue Waterloss?
Um, I think that's fine. I just was looking at the calendar, though, and it gets confusing because there's Fog Fest Committee and this committee and I I just don't know when we would place that committee because Tiger has something on the second Wednesday.
If we should.
Third Wednesday.
Third.
Second Wednesday looks clear to me. Unless I'm missing something.
Sarah is here.
Yeah.
Yeah, may I jump in regarding the second Wednesday? The Library Advisory Committee regular meeting schedule is for the second Wednesday of the month, though it has not met since the beginning of the pandemic. Those regular meetings have been typically canceled each month, but it is a scheduled regular meeting date for that committee.
They weren't meeting since before the pandemic. That's why I don't have it on my calendar regularly. I'm waiting for the green light finally. Perhaps City Clerk could help us finding a date and time that would work, given the robust meeting schedule that we have to navigate and come back to us at a later time.
And I I was gonna jump in about that second Wednesday in the Library Advisory Committee, since it hasn't met for a long time. There might be the possibility of looking for a new date and time for the L A C. And and allotting that time to City Council.
Nowing sense to me.
Yeah, me too.
Because I think it's fair to say we will be having a busy year coming up with housing element with, you know, follow ons from the general plan with phases of the Beach Boulevard infrastructure resiliency, things that tend to create those special meetings. So I think the idea of creating a placeholder and setting it on our calendars makes sense.
And I would prefer Wednesday simply because staff, you know, we're usually open till seven thirty on Wednesday nights, so staff is, you know, kind of available on Wednesdays.
And I would kind of prefer it on the on the week that we didn't already have the city council meeting. Because this week I have a meeting every night of the week to go to. So I would like, you know, one, one night that's free.
Well, then that would be the first Wednesday of the month. Is there conflicts? Sarah, do you have a calendar?
I feel like there's just so much more that we ha- have to discuss in in this document. It just.
We, and and to that point, Mayor, we could kind of tape, you know, parking lot this issue of the special regular meeting date and bring that back as a separate standalone item for council approval and amendment to this policy. You know, we we do handle special meetings on an ad hoc basis right now. And we could just, it might take a little bit more work to find a time and call through the, all the different meetings and prioritization of them to locate a a a standardized special meeting night.
And for the question on the first Wednesday each month, we have the regular meetings for the beautification advisory committee.
Yeah, I guess they're all scheduled on Wednesdays because staff is working till seven thirty, yeah, I guess, yeah. I would vote, we just parking lot those items, remain at seven, and we continue present practice.
And and the one thing on here is that we, the notification that is at eleven that we decide we're going to vote on extending the meeting time period. It said nine and then it was changed to ten, but we might as well change it to eleven.
Um, I had misspoke earlier that the 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 eleven o'clock time is inferred there. It says meetings will conclude by eleven unless unless a majority of council members present vote to extend. And then the 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 what used to be a nine o'clock but is now a ten o'clock time refers to the.
Amending the agenda.
Yeah, amending the agenda.
Well, that's. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I I was gonna say, actually, I have to run and plug my computer in real quick.
Go ahead. I'm really struggling even going over this at all. I just going, I'm sorry that I I'm going backwards, but going back to the comments made by our community that the timing of this conversation, I think it's it's really eating at me and so.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
I completely agree.
So are we not gonna, are we gonna adjourn the meeting and not talk about this anymore?
It seems like maybe we need to break it into different sections or table the item for a future meeting. I'm not sure what the right, you know, whatever one would like to do. But I think what the mayor's saying, if you don't mind me explain the approach he had envisioned and which I made a lot of sense to me in light of what we've done recently with our other large projects. It seemed like a reasonable approach. I think the difference here is that we haven't had a lot of time with this document and nor has the community. And so it feels like we're getting, we received some pretty strong feedback this evening.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's that's what I'm, my gut feeling is, is that we should table this to a different, a different meeting. I I don't think we're ready to talk about this. But I I'd like to hear from everyone else, too.
Well, should we have waited on the general plan to until we had a new body? I mean, if we keep waiting on things and waiting on things, then I don't think it's useful as a council because we have September, October, November, and December. That's four more months. We have to get things done. We can't put off everything because there might be a new council.
You're right.
The only thing I'll add to that, the conversation about, you know, we can take this up whenever. Originally, council had directed the goal of updating this policy before the end of the fiscal year. And because various work plan priorities and getting the ad hoc committee together and doing the research, it took longer than the end of the fiscal year. We do have busy agendas coming up and the agenda management is always a challenge. As you see on tonight's agenda, there's really only this is the only consideration item on on the agenda. It was intentionally a light agenda that way because we had numerous special presentations that were also time sensitive, so it it's really an art in trying to to balance the agenda. Having said that, it's completely the council's prerogative, and as you know, we recently polled for picking out a couple special meeting dates for city council meetings in October and November. So we'll have more meetings to, you know, get the business done, and we could table this to one of those meetings in in the future. One, one idea could be if the council didn't want to make decisions about it tonight, you could go through more of the deliberations so that the public hears the revisions that are being suggested and the rationale for them, and then continue the meeting to a a future date.
That would go, that goes more to what I was saying just a moment ago, Kevin, in terms of the opportunity to look over the information, to hear it, to understand, to discuss, and and amend, you know, if we think we need to or add. But I think the idea of going through and just making a decision on this tonight doesn't feel right. Doesn't feel like we, at this hour, it's ten o'clock, according to page two, we should be having a discussion right now, the discussion we're in fact having to discuss what we're going to do with tabling moving forward to another agenda. So I think we're already seeing the benefit of looking at this in terms of the way we do our work. And yeah, I think we should go through as much as we can, given our ending time of eleven P M. And table the rest. What do you think about that, Mary?
I think that sounds better to me, to be able to to continue the meeting, so that we can continue the item.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for that discussion. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, let's go back then and talk about it all.
Okay, so this bit about the council, I'm just looking at the bottom of page, which is also package page three twenty two. The council beginning at ten P M. and thereafter, if the majority requests it, will determine which issues will be at that meeting and which items will be continued to the next regular or special council meeting. And so does that feel like what just happened? And does that feel comfortable around how we can proceed? I mean, to be honest, I never, I didn't think about that. I didn't, I had no association with that sentence that I just read.
Me neither.
So I I like that. I mean, I'm glad this is a good process. It's really unearthing something that I think for me at least could be really a useful tool in terms of focus and meeting management and you know, that checking in. So that's, I mean, I realize that's not one of the changes. I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah.
Especially if we have a designated special meeting day that's consistent.
Right.
I hear you.
So we're putting a little asterisk or something here, a pin, what does everyone say, we're putting a pin in it to come up with some language about that special meeting. Right? I'm making a note in my margin about that.
Yes.
Okay, we're not gonna go through and try to figure out what that meeting is or anything right now. We're just gonna add language about third meeting.
Yes.
Got it.
Oh, thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward. I know Councilmember Wallace brought up changing oral communication to a public comment, and I just agree because I always get caught between the two.
I I have another weird thing. It says that the mayor may call for a break every two hours. Is is that how our bodies work? Every two hours? Just seems.
No, return.
I it does say additional recesses may be called, but it just seems odd to me.
It isn't hurting anything. I don't want to spend twenty minutes talking about it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so do you want to change oral communications to public comment, everyone?
Yes.
About number three on page three.
Yes.
Okay, so the words oral communications get changed to public comment.
Throughout.
Well, here's a question. Okay, okay, I got it.
Okay, so then we have C. The next change is in C.
Can we just maybe put pu- public comments on items not on tonight's agenda?
On non-agendized items, it says that.
Well, I know it says that, but I'm just trying to make it simpler because sometimes people seem to have not understand it, that's all.
On items.
So public, is it, I'm sorry, is it public comment or communication?
Comment.
Comments.
Comment. On items not on the agenda.
On tonight's agenda.
But might not be nighttime.
On this agenda.
I would suggest on the posted agenda.
Oh, that sounds good. That's very lawyer like.
On the.
And I think change all oral communications, you know, to public comments in the entire document.
Yeah.
And and Sarah, we're, they're also asking to change instead of on non-agendized items on the posted agenda.
Yeah, she got that. All right, so C is where the next change is. Do you agree with that one? Where was it, beginning which meeting, council, three minute limitation? I think that's fine. You are. Okay, C.
D, management of public comment.
Well, actually, E is not our current practice. It's the day of the meeting, isn't it?
Wait, we're on D. Let's do D first and then we'll move to E. Is everyone okay with the changes in D?
Yes.
Okay.
E is not our current practice because now the deadlines is, is it noon or four on the day of the meeting?
The deadline is currently noon.
On the day of the meeting.
Yeah.
So that needs to be changed.
Doesn't it say submitted by noon on the date of the city council?
Oh, all right, I was reading the line down portion, sorry.
And so there's the, there's the red and then there's green. And so where did the green come from?
They're they're just during our version editing with with different edits from from different iterations of the document.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are you ready to move on?
Yes.
So I have some stuff here for H. Let me take a look at it. I'm gonna have to come back to that because I I have it circled and I my notes, I I need to come back to that, but I think there's something there. Does anybody have any comments?
Is it also on E, Mary, that you're talking about or jump on one?
I'm talking about. H.
Oh, on H, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't get.
Just made a little edit.
And, and just for context, and, and the city attorney can jump in as well, but for, for H and I, with oral communications, the, the reason for there not being discussion about the items is that we, we have to comply with the Brown Act where council would discuss items needs to be agendized specifically. And when you have oral communications, those aren't agendized items that are raised. And so the council can't discuss those items. But clarifying questions is the normal, you know, or, or asking staff to follow up is the normal practice. And if City Attorney Kenyon wants to elaborate more on that.
No, I just wanted to confirm that, that those changes were primarily made to make sure that there is no confusion, that we were complying with the Brown Act.
Do we want to put a reference in there per the requirements of the Brown, Brown Act? City Council cannot respond to public comments? Or something to that effect?
We, we could. We could if the council desires that, yes.
Just clarifies it a little bit.
Yeah.
That's fine, because I know there's many times where we will ask questions based on the, on the public comment. Right? We'll, we'll actually address some of the questions made in public comment. But just not at during that time, right? Usually during our, our council communications or...
Yeah, and as this says in here, it's, you know, asking, clarifying questions, referring the matter to staff. That's, that's what typically happens.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to do the wordsmithing now. We can just have staff come back with it when we look at this the next time.
Yes, thank you. And so Sarah, I would prefer if you, instead of wordsmithing the document, just put it in the comments like you were doing above. And then that will just be a note for us to... Sorry, double-check that, that item.
Thank you, Sarah.
And the way they keep changing it, do you want to put the current Brown Act? They keep changing.
That, that sort of goes, I, I, I know with the council, we will wordsmith it. I, it's not going to look, it's not going to say in order to comply with the Brown Act, but it will, it will, it will get the message across.
Okay, we're looking at four A right now, right?
Yes. I'm fine with four A. You all? Please comment, say something.
I'm okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate the changes in, in C. For me, I've usually like made sure there was a consensus anyway because that's just how it feels. It feels better to do that. And so is that why you, you thought to change that? It might be nice to hear, hear the logic too behind the changes if, if at all possible.
One thing it's not addressed here is spokesperson for group of persons. Are we going to allow that spokesperson extra time because they're speaking for many people? That's not addressed here. You know, I, I mean, I've run across, you know, three people say they'll give their time to Joe Blow and he gets, they want him to get nine minutes. Do we want to put that in there or just leave it the way it is?
I, I would add that there's always the discretion for the mayor to suggest that depending upon the request, even if it's not included in the protocols.
Okay.
And it really is just a request, right? It, it, we can request that there's a spokesperson, but that's not necessarily what happens.
Right.
Correct. Okay, I will leave it like that. Okay, so...
Mayor, bear, were you asking for clarification on paragraph C?
I was, yeah. I mean, yes, as we go through, I think it would be helpful to have just what, the logic behind the changes that were made and then...
One, two, three.
Well, and, and I, so I could jump in. I think on C, really, the practice has been, you know, the mayor is the sort of presiding officer over the procedural aspects of meetings. And so here, the change was made that at the discretion of the mayor to allow additional public input seemed to be more what we do in practice rather than the council voting on that. But it, it's the council's decision about how, you know, how formal you want to be about that process.
Thank you.
I like it the way it's written.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. Okay, moving forward.
I actually like the idea City Abbot talked about of they get ten minutes and then three minutes separate for rebuttal. Because it, yeah, for appeals, that, the, explaining the rebuttal process and stuff always seems to be kind of a...
Probably takes three minutes to explain it.
Yeah, so I think it's...
Predict how many minutes you would want to reserve and all that.
Yeah.
I think it's... But I don't think, let's say they only use seven minutes for their presentation. They still only get three minutes for rebuttal. It isn't like banks.
So up to ten minutes.
Up to ten minutes and then three minutes for rebuttal.
Three minutes for rebuttal.
Yeah.
Right, but if they do it at eight, they don't get banked to, two minutes.
No, I agree. I think, I think it's a good, a good policy.
I also agree. Isn't that how we used to do it? Like a decade ago?
I don't know.
It, it feels like that's how it was when I first started attending meetings and then it changed. And I don't quite remember how that happened.
Well, it's interesting to note that, that that's how the policy was originally written. But, you know, ever since I've been here, it's been the, the ten with reserving three of the ten. So either way, it's, you know, as the commenter also spoke, there seems to be more appeals. So that, you know, adds time to the appeals things. It could go either way. It's just, as Councilmember Vatterla said, clarifying the process takes time too. So if we can be as clear as possible, then, and then it's, you know, only a three-minute difference. A six-minute, six-minute difference because you have the appellant and the applicant, you know, that get the same thing.
So it sounds like what we're deciding is to restore the words and three minutes for rebuttal.
Yes.
And strike with the option to reserve up to three minutes for rebuttal.
That's right.
And I also heard shall be given up to ten minutes for their opening presentation.
Yep, and she said up to on the side in the comments and up to three minutes additional. So they don't have to use...
Right, I'm concerned about that because I'm afraid it's going to introduce to people's minds the idea that it might change. In other words, that they can't count on ten minutes. That maybe it's going to be, I get up to ten minutes, maybe this time I only get eight minutes. Maybe this time I only get six minutes.
Oh.
So I understand what you're saying. It's, it's really going to...
A maximum of ten minutes.
No more than, yeah, no more than ten.
So I don't want, want to wordsmith it, but I'm just, that's what I think people could think when they read it and make it could be concerning to them. So I'll put a little asterisk in the little comment for staff to wordsmith that so it's clear.
Okay, thank you. Let's move forward to B. I feel like there was public comment around this.
Was it in the comments submitted before the meeting?
No, it was, it was during.
Okay. You don't need...
When they were talking about perceived, where is it? I'm sorry.
Madam Bear, I believe that that statement was with regard to council behavior.
Okay.
As opposed to addressing the public.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that.
So we actually softened some of the ambiguous language. We take out the slanderous and obscene remarks bit.
There's a lot of rights mentioned in the first two, in the first, in the second line of B. Can we strike the words "and" that right in the middle? The public have the right to address the council, including the right to make remarks that members of the city council may find critical, unpleasant, blah, blah, blah. So instead of saying "and" that right includes the right to make remarks?
I'm sorry, I dropped off.
Oh, no.
She didn't notice.
You were at point. I thought you were in deep thought over what I just said.
No, I dropped off and came back, sorry.
But I'm just suggesting dropping three words out of this sentence and changing includes to including.
Like that.
Yeah. Okay, so then we're at C. I appreciate those changes and I appreciate that. C. You good with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with C.
Oops. Okay, so now we're in the city council decorum. I'm fine with A.
I'm not okay with B.
Yes.
Yes, B is fine.
I'm fine with C.
Michelle, is this where the comments were? Was it for this paragraph or was it?
I, I don't believe so. I believe it's further down.
Okay, please let us, let me know when you see that. Thank you. Okay, I'm okay with C. Everybody okay with C?
D and E are good.
Thank you. Actually, E has some changes that we might want to look at. Yeah, this part.
Yeah, I believe it's E.
Yeah. The monopolizing discussion time, including posing...
And I will just note that that was, that's the existing language.
The red is the...
Except, except for the red underlined is new.
Correct, correct, except for the, but I, I think the, the comments were directed at the already existing language. I could be wrong.
Yeah, no, I think they were talking about monopolizing discussion time, including posing too many questions. Again, I think that goes back to like liber, um, making it so that we're not able to deliberate as much. I know we have council hours to ask questions all the time.
But I think you have to understand too that promiscuous rules of order allow council members to close debate and call for the question. Right?
That's, that's correct. And I, and I would also just add for the council's edification that the only penalty for anybody violating any of these protocols is just a, the potential for a public censure of the council member, which would require another meeting where that issue would be agendized for the council. And in all my years, I've never seen a council censure a council member for violation of protocols. But that, there is a remedy, but the remedy is simply a censure.
I mean, because it, this could be like the, you have the filibuster in the Senate where the guy gets up and starts reading green eggs and ham, you know, just to delay the votes. And keeps going on and on. So I think we do have to have the, the council itself has to have the right of being able to call a question at some point.
You have that right. Would you put on it?
Yeah, I know.
So I just don't think that the statement is necessary. If you want to talk about filibuster, fine, but I, I don't think we should keep council from asking questions, but I don't know. Again, it's, it's perception.
I have no problem with council people asking questions. I mean, you learn. And it sometimes prompts more questions.
Exactly.
And going down a road, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, Councilmember O'Neill and, and Mayor Proton Bigstick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I really think that the focus here on this revision was the, the aspect of too many questions that do not facilitate further deliberation, general understanding, or bring the issue to closure. Really, it's that filibuster concept on, you know, because questions that are related to the matter and are furthering understanding and deliberations, of course, that's part of the process. This is getting at more that, that filibustering situation.
Well, maybe you should just talk about filibustering and not this statement.
Yeah, open to any, any suggestions on, on language to clarify, sure.
Well, but the, and to that point, I would, I would want to more clearly define filibustering. So...
Yeah.
And, and I think that was the attempt by coming up with this definition by the subcommittee. But we can come up with other definitions.
I think maybe, maybe it's the too many questions and on an issue that doesn't sit right with me. I'm sorry, Michelle, come back.
No, no, you're, you're doing fine without me.
Yeah, I, I, again, it's, it's not too many questions on an issue. It's too many questions that don't facilitate further deliberation on an issue, right? We could clear, clarify that up somehow.
Well, take out the too many. A monopolizing question, monopolizing discussion time include, including posing questions on an issue that do not facilitate facilitate furthering deliberation is a mouthful. Posing questions on an issue that do not further deliberation.
Well, just throwing it out for discussion, do you want to set almost a time limit? Let's say every council member has five minutes and then it has to go to another council member, but can go back to the other person. So everybody gets their time at, you know, for discussion, but they can be repeated. I'm just throwing that out, you know?
Thank you for throwing that out. Thank you for throwing that out.
I feel like it's the role of the chair to kind of identify when it might be, um, useful to start redirecting the focus to another council person. Um.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I know that a part of the reason why we were looking at this, uh, as we were looking at other boards and what best practices are in other places. Uh, we thought it might be a good idea to address this issue of those who, uh, more erroneously start monopolizing the time for the sake of undermining the business at hand rather than, um, trying to further the discussion. And that's, that's where this attempt at nomenclature is derived.
Okay, I have a proposal on the, the part that's added at the end, where it starts, the phrase starts "or monopolizing discussion time." I propose striking the words "too many," striking the word "facilitate," and changing the word "furthering" to "further."
I, I think that's a li, I think that's a little better because then it's not like you're asking too many questions. No, because we want questions. And so I don't, yeah.
Is this almost kind of addressed by the term grandstanding?
Well, I have a little problem with that too, since you brought it up. I feel like the way, the, I feel, the way that the grandstanding is defined in this is I, I personally would strike the entire second sentence. And I would, instead of the sentence that starts "it," I would start that sentence with the word "grandstanding." And I would strike "on" to council dais. There will be no grandstanding on any issue. Grandstanding is the use of an individual council seat in a disrespectful and inappropriate manner to state a point of view, blah, 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 blah. I just feel like it's a little wordy, what we're trying to say grandstanding is. I do believe it's important to define it, but I think it's defined
Already? Yeah.
Do you want to just put there will be no grandstanding or filibustering on any issue?
Well, then you have to also define filibustering, as Mary said, and probably as our attorney will advise us.
Thank you, Councilmember Beckmeyer.
So if you say there will be no grandstanding or filibustering, then we had, would need to insert another sentence after we define grandstanding?
But, but I will say for the record that I think filibustering is being addressed in the last redlined sentence or phrase that's at the end of this paragraph. That was intended to address filibustering. So I don't think there's a need to address it in the first sentence.
Okay.
Or you could, but you would want to use the same definition that you have down there in the last phrase, but that would be redundant.
I think just like scratching out the inclu, including posing too many questions on an issue. Yeah, the, in, including posing too many questions. I just don't think that's a good thing to happen.
But there is a, there, the clause or the whatever that comes after this posing questions on an issue, then it clarifies what is what is problematic about the way in which they're being posed. Right?
I don't know. I think it's just the, uh, the posing of questions because you can, you can be filibustering without asking questions. I don't think it has anything to do with questions. I think it's just the general discussion on an issue that doesn't facilitate further deliberation. I just don't think it has anything to do with questions.
Okay, it's further, I hear what you're saying. Monopolizing discussion time.
I, I, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Or monopolizing discussion time, including oh no. I apologize. I can't read my own writing. Give me a second.
In ways that do not further deliberation, general understanding, or bringing the issue to now I'm putting back the ing's again. But I see what you're saying. Mary, what you're saying is take the word question out of it completely, not just the too many, but also the word question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that. And my, I think my writing says, or monopolizing discussion time in a manner which does not facilitate or further deliberation, or general understanding, or, you know, just get rid of questions and in a manner which does not, and then the remainder.
Yeah, because we want to be able to ask as many questions as we can.
Right. Monopolizing discussion time in a manner. In a manner.
That does not facilitate or further.
Or further deliberation, comma.
Deliberation.
Or understanding.
Understanding or bring the issue to a.
Bring issue to a conclusive decision. Period. I love it.
Yes.
Everyone else okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think in F.
Yes.
I think it's important for an explanation for the community to understand the process that we already do. Because it, like, in a city manager system or a city manager structure, right? This is what we're already doing.
Yes, exactly. And, uh, I, I can do that, Mayor. I'm sorry, did I, did I jump in too early?
No.
Nope.
And, and this is sort of, uh, there was a, a quote from the Half Moon Bay policy, and this is what's very consistent with that. Um, what this specifies though, and which is the practice in most council manager forms of government. Uh, the importance of the questions coming through the city manager is for efficiency. So you could have five different council members asking questions directly of, you know, department directors where it's all the same question. So if the questions come through the city manager, then we can efficiently consolidate and get the information to the entire council, uh, prior to the meeting. That's why that system exists like that, if that helps with the explanation.
Yeah, and to be fair, I, I feel like it works really well. And just so the community understands that when I pose a question and I send it to Kevin, Kevin sends it to a staff member and I get an answer super fast. And it's, it's thorough. And so I don't feel like this is giving power, more power to the city manager. It's actually helping us get the right information from the right person, from the right department.
Yeah.
And that is distributed to all five of us all.
Right. Yeah.
You know, I, as, um, a member of the public and I would go to these council meetings, uh, for years and over time I would develop personal relationships with city staff as a result, especially during intermissions or before or after the meeting, you know, I would go and talk to whoever about whatever and I, I had that ability. And then when I became a council member, I got to learn about the council, uh, manager structure, which is common through many cities. And I actually had to unlearn as frequently going directly to city staff. Because it, it mucks things up a little. So I, I'll, I'll often email city manager and maybe I'll copy the department head because I, it's hard for me to break myself of that habit. Uh, I was talking to, um, a government affairs, uh, official for PCE. And, um, as we were discussing, he was reminding me of the way generally in all cities, the council manager structure operates. And, uh, so anyway, it, it, that's all to say that as a member of the public, I was not aware of how that structure operates, which is very common in many, many cities.
And I've had other city managers and it was exactly the same. When Lori was the city manager, you went directly to Lori. That's the way it was.
So in other words, I'm, I'm fine with leaving out. Order of the agenda. So there's a lot of things that are redlined. So maybe we could get an explanation for that.
Yeah, so, so the clarifying note there is all, all of these redlined items have been moved into a new section called regular agenda items. And then any track changes on those items are reflected in that later section four. So if you scroll down past the, all of the track changes uh, redline there, then you, you get, uh, I'm sorry, it was earlier, I guess, the regular section four. Oh no, it's this one. Maybe the section number is incorrect there. Oh, section four, consent calendar. Section five, council communications.
Oh, yeah.
Six, regular agenda items. Yeah, so that, then this section six shows the track changes to those regular agenda items. Sorry, a little clunky in, in managing the track changes when you're reordering the document for readability.
Oh, I get it. Okay. I get it, I get it.
And, and I will, I will point out here under special presentations that there was, uh, the committee added this, you know, in, in, with this issue of trying to manage the length of time of meetings and the agenda. Um, added that, you know, trying to limit special presentations to no more, or collectively to no more than 20 minutes. Tonight's meeting was a little bit of an exception because we had four time-sensitive special, uh, presentations and proclamations that had to go in the month of September. But typically we would only have one or two and be able to do them in, in a 20-minute time period.
Yeah. And it says an attempt. So that's one and two. We're good with two. Right? Thank you for answering. I'm wondering why that, that part was striked out on section two, the very last sentence.
Where are they posted? Because, um, it seems that, that there should be a copy at the library. There should be.
Yeah, there, there's, there's copies at what city hall. I mean, it struck out because that just says at the council chambers, there, there is already, I believe, and city clerk coffee can clarify, but there's uh, new law about the, uh, posting uh, of the agendas or, I mean, the reports, I guess this, uh, section is talking about. Um, and so there's copies posted at city hall. There's, uh, copies of the agenda that are sent to the libraries. And then we always do have copies of the reports at the physical council meetings, uh, as well. But city clerk coffee can clarify the process.
I, I think this one, so we have a full, uh, agenda packet available, um, at the physical location of the council chambers when we're in person. And that includes the staff reports with the, with their attachments. But I think the, I think here we were responding to kind of the, the nature of our meetings being virtual right now, um, versus in person. So, um, we do have copies of the staff reports, the full agenda packets at the civic center currently without the physical meeting location.
Maybe there can be a reference of that. Maybe the hall number or something? Just like a.
Are we sending physical paper copies to the libraries?
The, the libraries, uh, we're having them post the agenda outline that we also post at the civic center, at the community center and, uh, the, uh, council chambers. So not the full agenda packet, which could be depending on the, you know, the attachments and the number of reports could be upwards of, you know, anywhere from 400 to 1,000 pages.
Right.
But, or and there might be community members that the only way they can read it is at the library. So we might want.
We, I mean, we do have the physical copy at the, at city hall too, correct, Sarah?
Yes, the, the physical copy of the agenda is at city hall and, um, they are also, uh, made available at council chambers, um, on the date of the meeting, when we have an in-person meeting. And the, the libraries are equipped with, um, you know, computers and usually, I, I believe have library staff that are available to assist with you know, accessing online materials.
Time check, it's 10:45.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll be extending the meeting tonight. I think we're gonna end at 11 o'clock and continue the meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I thought that was the consensus, but I just wanted to.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm asking.
Yes.
That's my understanding.
And by me. So are we asking right now whether or not to make sure there's a copy of the agenda in the libraries?
Yes.
It's not the agenda, it's the report.
The whole, the whole, um, agenda packet.
The packet.
We need to have it available as many places as we can for them. Cause that's one of the concerns of the community is that it's not accessible.
So, uh, I guess, I mean, I would like to, to talk about this a little bit because the physical, uh, printing and distribution of the entire agenda packet in, depending on like, as the city clerk said, it can be 1,000 pages is, uh, is quite onerous to do. We do have it available at city hall and it is rarely accessed at city hall. And, uh, and it's at the council chambers as well. I, I think, uh, you know, the council could decide what, if, if you wanted multiple copies distributed all around the city, we would do that. Um, but it's a, gonna be a significant undertaking as well as a significant amount of paper with, uh, I think some question about how, how, uh, frequently that is actually accessed versus electronically uh, accessed at a, at a library computer if someone needs assistance or at city hall.
How about we just leave that sentence in? We'll leave it at that.
Uh, which is fine. I mean, we do that. It's, they're, they're, they're posted and available at the council chambers.
Right.
When, when the, I mean, the reason we struck that out is because right now we're not doing in-meeting in-person meetings at the council chambers, so the reports aren't there because no one can get into the council chambers.
Or we could say when we are in, in-person meetings.
Yeah, that sounds.
Well, it feels like maybe one additional thing needs to be included, which is the statement that the city clerk made and that the city manager just reinforced that the full agenda packet is available at city hall. that the full agenda packet is available at city hall. Which again, right now is at the community center, right? And right now, there is no physical paper copy available at the council chambers. But I think the intent of this process is not to write our policies for what might prove to be two more months worth of not, or whatever, of not having in-person meetings, right? I mean, the intent is eventually city hall is going to be reoccupied. And it's a place with a specific address and location. And council chambers will be where we conduct our meetings in person. So should we be stating in this paragraph that the agenda packet is available and all staff reports and uh, attachments is available for public review at city hall?
Cause I don't. Just at city hall, and it's consistent wherever city hall is. It's where it'll be.
And here it only talks about in the council chambers. So what Mary just said to restore that last sentence, we never talk about the part that's at city hall.
You know, I, I have a suggestion because what's also weird about this is it falls, Sarah, can you scroll back up a little bit?
I know where you're.
For some reason, this just falls under the consent calendar.
Correct.
Discussion. So what I would recommend is we come back with a paragraph, if it's not already in there, it might be at a different location that talks about where the physical agenda packet will be provided.
I agree.
Because then it doesn't, and then it doesn't just pertain to consent calendar reports, it pertains to all of the reports.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the, and, and we'll clarify that it's provided at city hall. And when we're in, uh, when we're in in-person meetings, there will also be a copy at the council chambers. I believe state law continues to require at city hall as well.
Yes, so, yes, we'll include the city hall and we'll move the entire reference to all of it somewhere else in the document that is higher up or that pertains to everything, not just the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I think, so I think um, the, other than striking this uh, portion, this phrase here, I think my read on this was the intent of this statement was that because these are consent cali- this is under consent calendar. My take is that um, each of the consent calendar items, um, even though they're not discussed individually, they're voted on, um, considered as a whole. But each item will have a staff report that is sufficient to inform the public of each item on the consent calendar. And that those staff reports are available to the public. That's, that's my read on this. And I think that we were striking this portion of the uh, uh, this phrase in here because it was taking away from the emphasis that each consent calendar item will have a staff report that adequately discusses it.
I, I agree with Sarah.
So, yeah, the, the topic of where the agenda packets are physically provided will be addressed in a different section.
Got it.
Oh, that was weird. That was weird. Okay, number, section seven.
And for clarification, there was some just wording choice changes the committee wanted to make regarding deliberation versus discussion and, you know, discuss versus debate and that type of thing.
I'm okay with those changes on page eleven.
Sorry, which page are you, did you just?
Page three thirty-one, page eleven of the document. Except, let's talk about the abstention. The red line in that one in number twelve.
And, and city attorney Kenyon can clarify regarding uh, the legal requirements.
Thank you. This, this strikeout was simply um, to clarify that when somebody abstains for non-political reform act issues or actual, you know, um, financial conflict issues, that their abstentions only have effect on the quorum. There still can be a quorum. If there was a political reform act conflict, there could not be a quorum. But I also think that this is an attempt to try to address that um, there, there's no reason for a non, there's no reason to state why you are abstaining when you are abstaining for a non-legal reason, meaning if you're not abstaining for a political reform act issue, which by law you have to state your abstention and the reason for it, then there's no reason to state why you are abstaining from voting. Okay. That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
It's ten fifty-five.
I saw that. It's ten fifty-six. So should we stop there?
At the bottom of packet page three thirty-one?
Yes. We could begin on the next page. And we continue the meeting.
Here, today's date, nine twelve.
Thank you, everyone.
So don't we have to move to continue this today?
Oh, yeah.
Need a motion.
Um, I move that we continue this item till our next regular meeting.
Manager's gonna have to look at that.
A date to be determined.
Uh, yeah, I, I guess uh, what I would say is a, a, a date to be determined. City Attorney Kenyon, that's appropriate uh, motion where, where we have flexibility on determining when we can fit this into future agendas.
Yes, yes. And, okay. Then, then I move to extend this item to a date to be determined.
Second.
To continue.
Continue this item.
Continue, second.
So the motion made by Councilmember Votarlos and seconded by Councilmember O'Neal, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that motion to continue this item to a date to be determined passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. The meeting's adjourned at ten fifty-eight.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.